...to order at 2:03 on Thursday, the 27th of July. Danielle, and I'm turning it over to you.
Very good, thank you Mayor. We are missing a couple of council members. We have one who'll be here about 30 minutes late and still expecting the other ones, but we do have quorum, so we'll move forward with the strategic planning workshop. What I wanted to do is just start off kind of with an overview of what to expect this afternoon, what we'll be working on. On the screen, oops, let me do this. On the screen, you actually have the workshop itinerary. And this is the way it'll work out. I'll start off, of course, with an overview of the strategic planning workshop, then we'll move to the vision and mission statement. Then we'll be working on five key messages for promoting San Angelo, an update on current financial condition, an update on the top five strategic priorities that we've had for the last few years, the new strategic considerations, and then the downtown master development plan and assets discussion, and of course adjournment. Hopefully that adjournment won't be 10 hours from now, so we'll try to keep it a little bit shorter there. I just want to start off with the purpose of strategic planning. And we typically do strategic planning in February of the beginning of every year, and we do it right before the budget workshop. This year, since we had a whole bunch of new council members coming in, we definitely wanted to get the council members' perspective, so we're doing an additional strategic planning workshop. But the purpose for the planning workshop is really to set the direction and priorities for this coming year. Again, as we start ironing down, hashing out our budget, as a matter of fact, we'll have four meetings, and well, including today, five meetings in the next five weeks. So, we're going to have multiple meetings, and it's important to get this out of the way so that we can address our budget in an appropriate manner. So, we're going to start off with the vision and mission statement. It's basically who we are, and also what we expect to accomplish in the future. And we're looking at who we are and how to deliver that message, and that's the five key messages that I mentioned a while ago. We'll be addressing that more specifically. Then we'll focus on where we are today and where we want to go. And that is basically the essence of your strategic planning is determine our current state and exactly what we want to accomplish as it pertains to priorities. Next, we have, it also allows us to continue moving forward toward the completion of established priorities. We do have those five. We may be changing, amending to those, or adding more to the strategic priorities, but again, it'll be up to the city council. It also allows us to make adjustments when necessary. Who's involved? Everyone you see here, actually. We have city council, city managers, the directors, and basically, we have a, and the reason we do it this way is we definitely want to have all the thinking styles, different thinking styles, well-rounded perspective. City council, of course, brings a lot of diversity to these meetings, you know, various backgrounds, whether it's business, education, you name it, there's a lot of diversity here in the city council. And of course, the directors have their different fields of expertise. They're our experts. We hire them to perform a certain duty, and they're here to answer any questions that you may have. The workshop focus, again, is reaffirming our vision, developing the key messages, again, where we are now, and that's to update our priorities, and we'll have that presentation coming up, where we're going. We'll determine whether we'll have a continuation or addition to the priorities, and then how we get there. I do want to point out that this is an abbreviated workshop. Now, when we start talking about strategic planning, typically, you need about a day and a half to three days to complete a very thorough strategic planning workshop, but really, what we do is what I call an abbreviated workshop. It allows the city council members to set direction, and then we, as staff, go back and we help create strategy, the action steps, the measures, that we come back and present to city council at a later date to make sure that we're all on the same page as far as what we want to accomplish. But again, we want to get that direction from the city council members today. The first item that we'll be discussing after we do the vision and mission is going to be the five key messages for promoting our community. And I'll go through these briefly, then I'll come back to them a little bit more thoroughly. Really, what we're looking for is a vision for the city that incorporates five key messages. And what we mean by five key messages is we have to take a look at our community and determine what characteristics and what assets really highlight who we are, and then basically, what is a message for promoting each one of these assets? And then, we have to determine which stakeholders will be involved in further developing the message, and then also promoting each message. So, we'll get a little bit more detail here in just a little bit on this item. Then we'll have an update on our current financial condition. Again, it's important to understand our city's financial challenges and opportunities prior to start in the planning process. And I do want to point out, the city has limited resources. Not that we didn't already know that, but it's important to leverage those funds toward priorities with the greatest benefit. The city has 19 departments. We have a lot of different needs that need to be addressed, but as mentioned a while ago, we do have those limited resources. So, we, in the past, the city council has decided to focus on five key areas, five key strategic priorities that we can address, that has the biggest impact, and this is kind of the strategy moving forward. Any other considerations that you'll have, we definitely want to hear those as well. But again, these are competing for resources, and again, we're constrained by affordability. So, again, we want to make sure that we concentrate on those priorities that have the biggest impact for our community. And what are those five strategic priorities? Now, we've had these, again, actually developed about three years ago, and those are the water, that's the infrastructure and water supply, streets, of course, we started a very thorough seal code, mill overlay, and reconstruction program for the community. Police station, we'll have, I guess, an update on that and get a little bit of direction from the city council moving forward, what we might want to accomplish with that. We, I think we have some changes there. Of course, salaries, we want to make sure that we adjust to market. That's what the city council in the past had given a directive to the city manager and the team to accomplish. And then again, the development process, we wanted to make sure that we made definite improvements to our development process, especially to assist our business community, our developers, our builders, and we'll have a report on that as far as the progress that's been made there. And then, we'll be looking at new strategic priorities as well. We do have three areas that we'd like to address with the city council. Those three areas that are pressing on us right now is the health insurance, an increase in police officers, and the sixth frontline ambulance. And of course, any other strategic considerations that the city council wants to discuss as well, we'll be ready to address those. We do have the department directors here to address their departments or their divisions, so we'll have a lot of good information here. And then finally, we'll be discussing the downtown master development plan. One of our biggest assets, of course, is our downtown. We want to make sure that we review the guiding principles that were developed with the downtown master development plan, and also get direction from the city council, any recommended changes that you may have as well. And also, we'd like to discuss the development and administration of those assets. We do have certain properties at this point that we'd like to move forward with development. We want to make sure that the city council members are on board, or we have the directive from the city council as far as what needs to happen there. So, what I'd like to do now is go into the vision and mission statements for the city. These were developed through city council assistance about three years ago as well, and fine-tuned. So, really, I want to start off kind of explaining what the vision and mission statements are. So, the vision and the missions, they drive the goals for the city. The goals, strategies, and actions should always align with the vision and the mission statement. What is the vision statement? Basically, it's the future direction for the city. Any organization where it sees itself in the long term, it points to where the organization is actually heading. And then, we look at the mission statement, and the mission statement basically just tells us the reason for being, the reason an organization exists, and it's used to help guide decisions about priorities, actions, and responsibilities. And in developing the vision and mission, we focused on certain core values, and these are listed up there. That's excellence in service, vision and resolve, stewardship and accountability, productivity and efficiency, innovation and resourcefulness, professionalism and respect. These are all the core values that we, as a staff and city council, in the past, determined would really set us in the right direction. So, what is the vision statement for the city of San Angelo? The vision statement is to be the Texas standard for opportunity, prosperity, and quality of life. You may ask, what exactly does that mean? I'll get to that in just a little bit. I think the mission statement is a little bit, it's pretty clear, and that's the reason for being, our purpose for being, and that's to deliver excellence in services through best management practices, a dedicated, caring, and productive workforce, innovative solutions, and a strong commitment to fiscal responsibility. And this is what we aspire to on a day-by-day basis. If we fall short, we're continuously looking to make sure that we match up with what our mission statement states. So, let's get back to the vision statement for the city of San Angelo, to be the Texas standard for opportunity, prosperity, and quality of life. Now, this part is really important to address right before we go into the five key messages that we'll do next, and I'd like you to look at the handouts that you have received. After the itinerary, you'll see the vision statement. Now, the vision statement, again, opportunity, prosperity, and quality of life is a question that you may ask, what exactly do we mean by that? We actually do have that broken down. As far as the opportunity, really with the vision statement, let me go back to this. What this means is in order for us to be the Texas standard, we must move forward toward achieving the following. We must have or bring in new industry when you look at opportunity. We must have market-competitive-paying jobs, be one of the best places to live, have career opportunities, have strong agricultural industry, start growing oil and gas opportunities, have competitive business retention and expansion program. We definitely need to make sure that we have an updated technology to address telecommunications, fiber, and as a matter of fact, this has been an item that, Mayor, that you've been on as far as talking about that pipeline that we need. And then, of course, in order for us to be that Texas standard, we also must move toward having that multimodal transportation options available for the city. When you look at prosperity, what we determined fell under prosperity was that we needed to be fiscally sound at all times. We must have a solid infrastructure, a high standard of living, community value, vibrant tourism and convention destination, an ongoing community investment, and that's when people come and invest in our community, start up new businesses here as well. Growth of the Goodfellow Air Force Base mission, higher education opportunities through multiple career paths, ASU, Howard. Howard, just recently, and Mayor, I'm sure you can elaborate more on this, started a, is going to be starting a trade college as well, so that's huge for our community. And also, we look at quality of life. Where we want to be is here, is excellent, to have excellent medical care, parks and recreational opportunities, arts and cultural scene, a vibrant downtown and shopping districts, low cost of living, respected local education system, an attractive community for young and old. We're starting to see more and more people come to our community to retire here. We definitely should have a focus toward that, but also make sure that we don't leave out the young individuals that move to our community as well. We must have a dependable water supply, access to transportation, clean and safe community, ease of travel, and that's through land or air, and finally, a friendly, welcoming community. So, all these areas are broken down, so opportunity, prosperity, and quality of life, we call it the OPQ. All these have to be in place in order for us, moving forward as a community, to really be that Texas standard. We have to work toward being our best in all these three different areas. So, with that said, we'll move on to the five key messages for promoting the city. We have the vision that the city established in the past, but we also want to make sure that we establish five key messages. And again, I mentioned those five key messages a little while ago as those characteristics, those assets of our community that really highlight, as I said, that we would like to make sure we get the word out to others, specifically to investors who want to come to our community, or tourists, or others, of course, are people in our community. We want to make sure that we're highlighting those assets, and we're getting the message out there. Sometimes, you go to different places, you tell them you're from San Angelo, and they're saying, well, now, where exactly is San Angelo? That's the wrong question. Well, not only do we want them to know exactly where we are, we want them to know what we're about. You know, we want them to know what our, truly what our assets and our characteristics are, the things that we are most proud of. So, the first question becomes, which community assets do we want to highlight? You know, so we'll start off there. And with that said, I do want to make sure I can run up to the boards up here and start filling out, you know, as I continue with those questions. First question is, which community assets do you highlight, and which ones do you want to start off with? And really, what I propose that we do is we develop perhaps 10 areas, or 10 assets that we can look at that we're proud of, 10 different characteristics that we can highlight, and then maybe narrow that down to five. From there, we're not going to develop the message today, that is not the intention right now, or how to promote it, but we want to make sure that we find out what those characteristics are, that we're all in agreement with that. So, with that said, let me, actually, Sandra? There you go.
I forgot we had.
That way, I won't have to move the microphone around, I'll just have Sandra go in. She had volunteered earlier to, thank you Sandra, to help us with our brainstorming. Mayor, is there anything else you'd like to add for, as far as what I just talked about?
No, but I will go through some of my comments and focus as far as how I believe that we need to look at this vision. And when it's all said and done, obviously, producing a financially secure city is important, and you can't do that if you don't have economic development. So, economic development is, for me, one of the most important things that we have to focus on. And recently, I was at a meeting with six of the mayors from West Texas, Lubbock, Amarillo, Midland, Odessa, Big Spring, Abbling couldn't make it, myself. And what we know is that the one thing that we all share together are some common economic drivers, and those are food, fuel, and fiber. We share all of those. And when you talk about all of those, then you start talking about what are some of those issues that we need to look at to make sure we can drive the food, fuel, fiber areas of our business? And that means that you, if you're going to recruit businesses, you need to look at your industrial parks and make sure your industrial parks are strategized to fit into the model of food, fuel, and fiber. And that means that, number one, you got to have a business park and industrial park at the airport, you got to have a business park and industrial park somewhere on the railway, because the way we transport goods is planes, trains, and automobiles, if you will, not just by truck. We have a huge opportunity out at our airport. If you go online and start studying some of the articles that are being written right now in the aeronautical business, you will see that that's supposed to be one of the fastest-growing fields in the future. And so, you look at it, and you say, we have a big airport, we have been so focused on trying to get another airline in, that we forget to focus on the other opportunities that an airport has attached to it. And that is an industrial park, it means there's going to be a huge need for aeronautical jobs, a huge need for mechanics, a huge need for people to repair planes. So, we can make ourselves look a whole lot more important at our airport if we make our airport more important, instead of just a field where we land commercial airlines and they take back off with passengers. The opportunity's bigger and greater, we've got the airport. If you drive north on 87, every town you go through, you'll see a sign that says Airport/Business Park. They don't just say airport, they say Airport/Business Park, or Industrial Park. So, we've got to look at that as a huge, big opportunity. The same thing with railroad, for much different reasons, but that becomes a very important part of making sure that we broaden our focus in terms of who we want to recruit to this city for economic development. The end of the day, we need to have higher sales tax and higher property taxes, and you can't do it without a strong economic development plan. If you look at the top 10 economic drivers in San Angelo, I've got my list of 10. It could be that I've missed a category, and certainly, I want anyone to add to this, but first and foremost would be Goodfellow Air Force Base. It currently is 10% of our workforce here in San Angelo, it's the single largest workforce we have. So, the Goodfellow Air Force Base is one of our major assets, and one that we want to make sure strategically, we know that we are working with them at multiple different levels to secure the continued growth and development of Goodfellow Air Force Base. Two is education. We recently have announced that we will, Howard College will be opening up a trade school in 2018, and it will be a trade school that has been put together and 100% funded by the home builders of San Angelo, and though the various industries attached to that, as well as the State of Texas Home Builders Association. Education is important, because one of the key things that you need to do in a community like ours is to make sure that we provide a level of wage that's an affordable living wage, not a minimum wage. And we talk all day long about bringing in industry that will pay higher than minimum wage jobs, but we forgot to look within ourselves and say, how do we educate our young folks here in San Angelo to make an affordable living wage, not minimum wage? And that is in the home building industry. So, we've got to look within ourselves in the educational areas to find out, how do we make sure that we have people that have the opportunity to develop trades, that can make $20, $25 an hour, that helps supplement the commercial and home builder's business anyway, so that we have the appropriate amount of subcontractors here in town to support that business, and that we have an opportunity to keep our young folk here. You talked about old and young. Well, young is what we want to keep here, and you can't keep them here, and you can't keep them out of drugs and crime if you don't have the ability to educate them at more than minimum wage jobs. So, education becomes an important part, whether it's our SAISD, the charter schools, the religious schools, Howard College, or ASU. And I think ASU is going to announce that there's somewhere, their enrollment's up to about 10,000 people this fall season, which is a pretty dramatic increase. We talk a lot about the retirement community here, and one of the reasons that they come to San Angelo is because of the medical care we have here, whether it be community or whether it be San Angelo Shannon Hospital. So, medical becomes an important part, but you will also note that some of the industry that we are creating opportunities for, and perhaps new businesses here, are all in the medical field. So, they're looking at San Angelo, Texas, because of the hospitals and the connections and the jobs attached to that as a place to bring their business. So, once again, it's an economic driver, not only a quality of place, but an economic And with that is healthcare. So, it is a combination, not only of jobs, opportunities, but services. Then you have cultural, which we, again, we talked about in terms of the strategy. Our arts here are very important to us, whether it be the symphony, whether it's the new San Angelo Performing Arts Center, whether it's the incredible music scene that we have here. The cultural aspects of this town help bring people to this city, and it's one of the reasons people want to move here, and one of the reasons they want to continue to live here and move back here. Recreation. We talk about our parks. One of the greatest assets we have are our parks, but the biggest park, if you will, we have is Lake Nazworthy. What are we doing to make it an economic driver? It exists, we use it for water source, but what other opportunities are there for recreation at Lake Nazworthy? It's certainly one of those assets that we have here in San Angelo that all the other cities around us would love to have. As you know, many people from Midland, Odessa come here because of our Lake Nazworthy. So, we want to make sure we've looked at that and have a strategy to grow and develop Nazworthy into a much bigger economic driver and a much bigger quality-of-place opportunity. Next week, we're going to have a legislative summit, which will be focused on agricultural. Obvious, it'll be, I think the enrollment for this session is up to about 450 people. The largest we've ever had before is 150 people. So, it tells you an awful lot about what agricultural means and means to this part of the state of Texas. You can't ignore it. It's sometimes out there, and we forget about it, because we're not out driving around in the cotton fields and see the cattle growing, or the sheep growing, or the goats growing, or the whatever growing. Agriculture, we cannot miss, not understand the importance. Many of those people are the people who come into San Angelo and spend their dollars. They are a backbone, an economic driver in terms of the businesses here in San Angelo. So, that's always going to be a topic of conversation. Oil and gas services. That is something that we know today is a great thing when it's good, and it's a real tough thing when it's bad. But the more we can look at these other areas of opportunity, the less impact these ups and downs in the oil and gas business have for us. So, we want to make sure we have what they need. I would hope that this go around with, as we start to benefit from the oil and gas business, that I don't hear anybody saying, oh, those ugly white trucks. I hope that I don't hear anybody saying, oh, they're ruining our roads. We, as a community, must have a positive attitude about the oil and gas industry. As you know, when you look back over the sales tax increases, when were they the highest? Have we ever had any other industry that has had that kind of a peak in growth other than the oil and gas industry? And the answer would be no, and the answer would be, and there won't be another industry that we have here that will ever give us those kinds of highs and that kind of a boom. So, we need to make sure we're projecting ourselves as a city, a city council, of someone who loves the oil and gas industry, we love what it does to our community, we like the folks. We don't want to hear realtors saying to somebody looking to buy a new home in San Angelo, oh, we, oh, those oil and gas people, they're just ruining our roads, and our traffic's bad, and I can't get through a light, it turns three or four times. We must have growth, we must have the oil and gas industry. We're out here in West Texas, that's a blessing. Let's not make it a negative. Manufacturing. And that also goes along with the oil and gas business, of course, because we see many of the subsidiary businesses from the oil and gas area looking at us for manufacturing opportunities, and that will continue to exist. So, we want to look at where we can grow those manufacturing opportunities. Tourism. We have one of the best-preserved forts in America, Fort Concho. We have one of the greatest historic downtowns. When I was at this meeting with the other mayors, the interesting thing, their number-one strategy in every one of those cities was rebuilding their historic downtown, number-one strategy. And it was their number-one strategy, because as they said, if you think you can recruit a business and drive them in from the airport and take them through your downtown, and your downtown's falling apart, and it doesn't look like anybody cares, you will not recruit that business to your town. So, tourism is very important. We have a great benefit of having spent $14 million redoing the Concho River in downtown. So many people compliment us on that. Tourism helps build those sales tax dollars, helps fund Costa DC, and we need more growth through tourism. And then, of course, retirement. We are a retirement city, and we want to make sure that we continue to have those things that the retirement community wants, and one of those is certainly medical care. And San Angelo definitely has and will continue to have an option, good health options for people, as well as education systems for people. So, between Howard College and ASU, we have a wonderful backup for retirees. But when I talk about these 10 areas, I also say, so what are the barriers that keep San Angelo from moving forward when you look at these opportunities? Well, one is technology. We need a larger pipeline, we need to, and that's something that you just can't make happen overnight. It's something that you got to start working on today and make sure that you have developed a strategy, because many people who come here are going to say, well, you know, San Angelo, it's so far out there in West Texas that we don't get any cell, the cell phones constantly drop. I'm always on the phone, and my phone call drops. I was trying to get on my computer, the computer's slow today, oh my gosh, the, somebody took down a pole, my computer's dead today, I can't even get on it and work. So, technology has to be something that we look at, because you're, we are not going to be able to grow as a city if we aren't forward-thinking as it relates to technology and making sure we have a pipeline that allows for growth and development here. We will always talk about permits and planning. We want to change the message that San Angelo is a difficult place to work with for permits and planning, and that is unfortunately, a message that's out there, and people talk about it all the time. Many of you who work in permits and planning know that when you get down to the nitty-gritty, those stories aren't always true. Very often, they're not true. The unfortunate part is the message is out there. So, we've got to, as a city, be able to send the message out there that we have a permits and planning department. and planning department that is helpful, that's smart, that's pro-business, and they will help you get your business expansion, growth, or new business going. Ports to planes, I-14, I-27, all important to us. Railroad, airplanes. Big, important message for us. Remember, we're out here in West Texas, as they say, and so people need to be able to get here, find us, and if they're going to have a business here, they need to be able to get their goods out of San Angelo to where they're going. And that's where the airport comes into play, that's where the railroad comes into play, and that's where a business park comes into play. Workforce. We have a very low unemployment, and so one of the issues that will impact us is if, in fact, we can't get the workforce numbers up. I met with somebody right before I came over here who is looking at San Angelo, and they're going to need a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty people the minute they get their plant. We're already at low unemployment, and we know that in Midland and Odessa, that they're growing by leaps and bounds. I had a cook who just walked in yesterday and said, I just got the job offer. I'm out of here. I'm gone. So it's starting. We've got to find a workforce. We've got to recruit and make sure we have the workforce here to support the growth that we need. We don't want to be known as a city of high crime, and part of our way out of that is education and training. The reason we have a need, in fact, for Howard College, the reason we need to be able to have a trade school, the reason we need to have people be able to make more than minimum And then last is property taxes, because one of the big areas that everyone looks at when they're looking at your city, whether it's the retirement community, whether it's a business, is your property taxes. In meeting with these other mayors, what was interesting to me was to find out that five of those cities have their property taxes all under forty cents. So thirty-five, thirty-two, thirty-four, one was at forty-nine, and we're at seventy-six, seventy-seven. So we're out here with one of the highest property tax rates in West Texas, and we know we have to have it there. This isn't an issue about not having it where it is. It's obviously required right now in order to fund the city, in order to fund the services, in order to do what we want to do. The only way we can change our property tax rate is to grow the base of our commercial business. And that goes back to all the things I just talked about. It all ties back into, we've got to have growth and development. It is the number-one strategic plan we have to have in order to make sure that the city continues to provide the services, the infrastructure that they need, that our citizens need. It's number one. And we know that today, the residential property tax is carrying the burden of the city, and we need a higher tax base in commercial development. So that's a lot that I'm throwing out at you. It's a lot of information, but, and I might have missed something here, but as we talk through everything today, I want you to kind of go back and think through some of those things, because it's the bigger, broader picture of what we've got to think through when we make decisions. And very often, city council meetings are obviously focused on changing ordinances or, you know, the daily business of City Hall. But we've got to be leaders as city council and a mayor. We've got to be leaders to help move our city forward, and we've got to be able to project our city as bigger than we really are. And bigger, because we think bigger, we're going to act bigger, we're going to react bigger. We've got to think like we're a bigger city than we are. And when you get down to talking about, you know, your city and what, you know, where we're going to go from here, several things came to mind, and they're cliches, if you will, but I think that they're important to say. It's sort of fish where the fish are. Focus on the businesses and the areas that make up what your community is. Don't try to make us into something we're not. We've got a lot of strengths here. We just haven't had a strategy to maximize all those strengths. Make sure you tell the people who you are. If you think about it, and I ask you, well, who are you as a city today? What would you say? What, what's our message? We have a message at the chamber. Discover San Angelo. What's our message here in the city? One that somebody would say, hey, that's a city who thinks bigger than they are. That's a city that provides a quality of place. And I'm going to talk a lot about quality of place and not quality of life. And that's because quality of life is different for everybody. If you're seventy-five, your quality of life might be based around healthcare. If you're twenty-five, your quality of life might be based around the job opportunities that you have. If you've got children that are twelve and thirteen years old, education's an important factor. But quality of place means that we met all the criteria that people look at when they're looking at us as a city to live in. And we must start to remove the barriers that keep us from moving forward and becoming the city we have the great opportunity to be.
Mayor of Amay. That's a great list, as far as the ten that we have at this point. We definitely want to hear from the council members as well, if there's anything that they'd like to add to those assets, those characteristics that you just listed on there. There's ten there. Again, as we mentioned a while ago, we'd like to get these down to five, and after we get it down to five, is create those committees that will develop that message and as far as that vision moving forward, what that's going to look like. But council members, is there anything else that, I know the mayor covered a lot, but is there anything else that you all would like to add to that?
One of the things I think we need to add quickly, as one of our assets, is every single employee that works for the city of San Angelo. This would not be what it is without the employees. So I think that that is one of our biggest assets, and we need, we need to take care of that asset in the best, best way possible. One of the things, too, that Brenda mentioned, a couple of things that were barriers. One of the things, I'm not sure it's a barrier, but maybe something on which to focus, because she, she talked about economic development. I think one of the things on which we can focus, we may not be able to get the Fortune One Hundred, maybe the Fortune Five Hundred, but what maybe we can look at in terms of economic development is the supply chains that go with some of these larger industries that they'll, they'll have to have those services or those goods that are attached to them, and they may not necessarily have to be where that large business is, but it needs to be in the vicinity. So I, I would say we need to look at the supply chains from an economic development standpoint that can benefit the community, that can bring business here, but that they may be the, the twenty-five-employee firm, they may be the fifteen-employee firm, maybe the hundred-employee firm, but those are two things that jump out at me.
That's kind of where I had to make a draft.
Okay.
Kind of services that go with all of that.
I had written, while you were talking, I had written down transportation, but you did get to that, so that, that's a key, too. The only one that I would add that would be, one of the assets would be, be our employees.
Okay, thank you, Tommy. Is there anyone else that would like to include any other assets? Again, I think that there's a full, there was pretty, pretty good coverage right now from the mayor and also Tommy, and if there's anyone else who would like to include that, anything else before we narrow it down to five? We'd sure love to hear that. Looks like we're good with eleven items, then.
[laughing]
Let's do this, then. When we look at the eleven, then, again, there's some wonderful ones up there. Which ones would we say would have the biggest impact at this point, if we were to address them first? So again, to narrow it down to five, of the eleven that we have up there, which one would you say first, first and foremost should be up there?
Well, we've got to support Goodfellow, and that's the largest employer that we've got. We really need to make sure that we're doing whatever it's necessary to grow the, grow Goodfellow, grow their missions, support them in any way we can do that. And, and of course, I, I, it goes along with what Roland and his team is doing in Costa DC, and that is retention and expansion of the present businesses that we've got, which is healthcare, which is Howard College, which is ASU, all of those large employers that we can continue to do that. We've got to go back out and still look and draw other businesses to San Angelo, but Tommy pointed out, you're not going to get the Goodyear's of the past or the Johnson and Johnson's of the past. Those two organizations today in San Angelo are just a shadow of what they were twenty, twenty-five years ago. So the twenty-five, fifty-employee, a hundred-possibly employee firms, we're, we're going to be able to support. But there's very, very little doubt in my mind with unemployment being at four percent and, and most of those individuals being not trained in, in some of these industries. We are not going to be able to draw a three or four hundred member business. But we've got some businesses in this community already that are, we've got one, for example, that's, that's homegrown, Time Clock Plus, that's got almost three hundred. Four or five years ago, they were less than a hundred. Two or three years from now, they expect to be at five hundred. We need to continue to support those types of businesses. Principal LED is another one, not quite as large, but they're another homegrown company that choose to be headquartered in San Angelo and are a hundred-plus employees. We've got to support those types of things, I think. And, and that means we've got to support them not only from affordable housing, but the infrastructure that goes with them. And that is several things, we talked about, about expanding homes and businesses at the lake, and know that we've got barriers out there, because we don't have the sewer infrastructure to take care of that. I know Bill and Allison are working out a plan, and I spoke with them yesterday on it. We've got to figure out a way that we can support that. There are people that want to move to San Angelo, that want to stay at the lake, that want, want to have an opportunity to go to restaurants and other things at the lake. But until we, we get that solved, we're not going to be able to do that. And we've got a plan in place on roads and streets, and we need to make sure that we, we continue to work on that. We, the engineering department and the street and bridge people are working very, very hard, and we've got to be able to support them to make sure that, that we've got plans in place and follow through with those plans to get these things right. The greatest thing I hear on, on a regular basis, almost daily, is, when are you going to fix Bell Street? Of course, it's in my district, and so I hear it probably more often than a lot of people, but we've got to be able to continually lay those plans out and then follow those plans and keep people appraised of our progress on anything that we do in those particular areas. I, I, I think that's the key thing that we can, we can talk about is communication. You know, I think, I think Anthony and Brian do a, do a good job, but we, as council people, always don't know what the, what the city and the city staff are doing, and so sometimes it makes it difficult for us to answer those questions without us having to go to City Hall and say, hey, can you tell me what's happening here? So I think greater communication with us on, on, on things would help us get that message out to a lot of people.
You mentioned Goodfellow Air Force Base as a, your top. I think that you go around the room with council members, you probably would all agree that, that is an important mission that we have here in our community. So as far as Goodfellow Air Force Base is, I guess I hear that everyone would agree that's one of, it's going to be one of our, our big messages, then. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. And you, you were talking about the Business Retention and Expansion Program. Of course, it's not, it's not up there as far as one of the, the items. Is that something you want to include in there as well, Harry?
Well, I, I, I think if we don't, we don't continue to do that and, and, and explain it, then we're, we're losing the opportunity of keeping people in San Angelo. Brenda talked a little bit about, about people that are, are leaving because the opportunities in Odessa or someplace else in the oilfield. But these particular types of businesses are, because they're homegrown, people, and they're paying good wages. We need to continue to support those, those types of businesses so that people can stay here and not have to go to Austin or San Antonio or Odessa or DFW. So we've got to support that. I, I personally think if we don't, we don't do that, that we're, we're really losing an opportunity.
Well, when we talk about the economic drivers, we're not talking about simply those things that we're going out to find, to bring here. We're talking about those businesses that are here, and that we need to make sure, as we make decisions, that those decisions have a positive impact on the existing businesses. So by no means are we talking strategically about everything is with, not in our city. It's here. There's some element in our city already. It's how we maximize that. And I think the chamber, one of my strategic plans is to make sure that we, the city, the chamber, the county, are meeting on a regular basis so that we understand what's going on in each other's world, because when we're all not talking, we're living in three different worlds, and that doesn't work. Businesses want to know that whether you're talking to the city, or the county, or the chamber, that we all understand the issues.
And I think you're absolutely correct, Brenda. I think communication and partnerships probably are two of the greatest things, actually, they're assets that we have. We just need to make sure that we, we continue to utilize them and, and grow.
So let's do this. We have Goodfellow Air Force Base, Business Retention and Expansion. What I propose that we do is we, we'll come up with the, with the initial five, narrow it down to those five assets, and then we can kind of, as, once we get it up there, we can make adjustments to that as we have more discussions, say, wait, you know, this one's a good one, but I think this other one that's out there is a little bit better as well. So with that said, we've heard from the mayor, we have heard from, from Tom as well. Any other, I mean, I'm sorry, from Harry as well, and any other council members, any priorities that you see up there, do you think, or assets you see up there that should be included in there?
Well, Dan, you'll, one of the things that I see, I think Brenda came up with a very, very good list, and if we're answering the question, which community assets should we be highlighting? You know, to me, that speaks to what we would do to attract other businesses to San Angelo, maintain the businesses that we have with the focus on our economic development, to increase our tax bases so that we can continue to do the things that make San Angelo a great city. So as I looked at the list that Brenda laid out, Goodfellow, education, certainly, education is a high priority. When I was doing direct recruiting for Ethicon, those were the kind of services that families wanted to know before they relocated to San Angelo. And Ethicon, in its heyday, relocated an awful lot of, of families here to San Angelo. And I actually would drive them around the city to show them what a beautiful city we had. And so, and I, I would show them ASU at that time, when I was doing it, that was our premier educational spot. Now we have Howard as well. Our medical facilities, a lot of the senior staff were coming from Chicago and New Jersey and New York, and they were older, mid-fifties upward. And so the medical facilities were certainly, you know, important to them. Cultural arts, coming from New Jersey, where you can, you know, go to Broadway and radio, Times Square and things like that, that was important. So as I've looked at all of these things, all of them are absolutely important. I think they're almost in the order that they should be, and I think maybe some of them could be combined. Agricultural slash manufacturing, you know, could be combined. But I see exactly what I used to tell people about San Angelo when I was trying to sell people on San Angelo and get them to relocate. So when we talk about community assets to highlight, I think they're absolutely, the first five would be my vote.
Did you have any particular order?
Well, I had them this way, because, again, I sort of looked at it in terms of who employs people here, and I think that when you look at the employment that these offer, it helps to define that. Certainly, I think you can combine things like cultural slash recreation slash tourism. I think that can all be one element. They share a lot in common. Medical slash healthcare can be an element, because one's about service. Medical slash healthcare can be an element, because one's about services, one is about industry, and to a certain extent, retirement can go with that, because that's one of the areas that they want. So, if you said, Goodfellow Air Force Base is one, education is one, medical, healthcare, retirement is three, cultural, recreation, tourism is one, manufacturing could go with agriculture, or it could go with oil and gas services.
The three of those could go together?
Certainly, agriculture's been here for forever, and sometimes it doesn't get the focus that it needs, and the only time it gets a focus is, guess what happens in February? And so, we have one three-week period that we really highlight, the stock show rodeo element, which is a huge boost to this economy, and then we kind of forget about it, and so I just throw that out there, is let's not forget from whence we came, and to remember that it is an economic driver, because it's a lot of those ranches and farmers outside this city who bring their dollars to town.
Mayor, you're going pretty quickly.
Oh, sorry.
But we do have Goodfellow Air Force Base, we have number two, education, you started combining, you said, medical, healthcare, and retirement as number three, number four, cultural, recreation, tourism, and number five, you had...
Agricultural, manufacturing, oil and gas services. And that's very broad, but they all share some elements together, so it kind of takes the 10, yeah.
Commodities.
It takes the 10 down to the five, and they all have elements to it. The one thing, you know, you would put then, based off of what Mr. Hebert said, is then you would do number six as city employees. So then you get, so we go from five to six, it's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, when I was looking at this top 10 list, I was having a hard time trying to pick five, but that's exactly how I was grouping them in my head. Goodfellow because you have 10% of the employees, education because that's the way that you're going to provide those higher-paying jobs, for healthcare, to provide for the retirement, recreation, you wanna keep our citizens here happy and occupied, but also tourism, to bring others in to spend hot tax and sales tax. I grouped number five as commodities, because those are in sales, but that's exactly right. But I can't focus on anything else when I see a barrier of transportation, because accessibility is gonna be number one way that's gonna prevent a business and other people from getting to San Angelo.
Well, and those are the things that we talk about, we have to focus on as they support all this other stuff, because that's an issue. It's important, we gotta get people here, and we gotta get goods out of here, so...
Very good. Any other thoughts on that list that we have up there? We have actually six items at this point.
The only thing that is separately that we need to make sure we don't lose as we do that is the economic development aspect of all of those, because bottom line is, we need to grow economic development, we need additional sales tax dollars, property tax dollars, we need income, and economic development as it relates to each of those is very important. So...
A quick, please. Mayor, if you look at your list, it's fine, but if you take five through nine, you can lump all those together, it's just economic impact.
It is.
Same thing as February rodeo. We bring people to town, have them spend money, and go, and that's what helps us survive in one of the best months we have, but I think you could pretty much group five through nine as economic impact.
Yep.
Okay. We have our list, is there, this is our first try at that list, is there any changes that any of the council members would like to make to that list at this point?
How can we have an impact, or this is just a big question in my mind, some of those, we can have more of an impact than others, so at what point do we then begin to focus in on those on which we can have an impact, a bigger impact?
You know what, some of that's gonna change based off of what's out in front of us. I mean, if you take a look at Goodfellow Air Force Base, one of their big issues right now is increased housing, it's an increased pipeline. So, you look at that and you say, those are issues that certainly, there is a group already looking at, working with Goodfellow Air Force Base on the pipeline, so they've taken on that responsibility and direction. We need to make sure that we have adequate housing here for, because one of the big challenges going forward is, in order to get any more emissions, they've gotta have more rooms, and housing becomes number one. So, part of that is, we as a city, understanding that focus, and as we talk about economic development dollars, making sure we prioritize and everyone understands what the priorities are, so when they're making decisions at Costa DC, those are taken into consideration. And each of us have an appointee on those boards, so we wanna make sure they all understand.
Brenda, let me ask a question.
Sure.
We've listed number three up there, medical, healthcare. From the standpoint of this council and this city services, in what way can we actually impact that portion of it? I think I'm struggling a little bit here, I mean, I know housing, and we've already done a lot with Shannon and community, and how we were able to get ordinances updated so that they could build other facilities. In what way do you see this group actually impacting healthcare and the medical portion of it?
Well, some of it goes back to education, it wasn't too long ago that we saw there was a huge opportunity in the field of nursing.
Right.
And all of a sudden, we have a Howard College who has a terrific nursing school, and same thing, we had an opportunity to get a trade school. What we need to do and understand as a council, when those things are thrown at us, or someone says we need, that we immediately have our eyes and ears open that says, "Here's an opportunity, what are we doing about it? Have we gone to Shannon? Have we gone to community? Have we gone to West Texas Medical and said, 'Do you guys have any issues? Is there anything we as a city can do to help?'"
Yeah. I've sat down with Shannon leadership, and so I've visited with Shannon, but that's in the middle of my district, so, you know, that's one of those things. I'm just trying to make sure that we've got a priority up there that we can influence, and I think that's why I asked that question.
Mayor, about me, I do wanna point out that one of the things that we wanna do here is, of course, talk about the stakeholders. When we start looking at each one of these that were listed up there, who are the stakeholders that'll be involved? Because we're talking about partnerships here, so it's not just the city coming up with a vision, we need to make sure that we pull all these community stakeholders together. So, when you look at number one, Goodfellow Air Force Base, the question becomes, okay, who are the stakeholders that should be invited to a meeting so we can develop a pretty good vision and make sure that we're looking, we develop a message that is worthy of this community as well? So, again, we can switch over now to stakeholders and start looking at Goodfellow Air Force Base. Who are the stakeholders that should be invited to that meeting?
Correct.
So, starting with that, I mean, who do we start off with, of course?
You need to lead it.
Absolutely.
Ricky Mills.
There you go. The city, we don't even have to put the city up there, because we're gonna be involved in all of them anyway, but who else besides our new Colonel?
Shannon and Community.
Okay.
Well, probably your higher education, maybe even your Howard College folks.
ASU and Howard.
Yeah, because of what they are, what partnerships they already have that exist, so they probably need to be at the table.
Very good.
Housing, making sure we understand what our housing situation is.
Okay.
And don't we have a partnership with our fire department and Goodfellow?
We do.
Right now, so to me, that would be...
And there will be new, you know, they talk about the four Ps, or the P4s, and so one of those P4s is the city, and so we are a very big part of Goodfellow Air Force Base's strategic plans. They want more P4s, and we're one of the Ps, so we know that we're important to them, and they help define that to us, but I think it's finding the four or five people out at Goodfellow Air Force Base who can be good communicators to us, because the wing commander by himself is gonna have a pretty full deck. Who else underneath him do we need to be bringing into the circle?
Any other stakeholders that should be included in there? I mean, you've mentioned...
You've gotta have someone from the technological services.
They have their own. Goodfellow Air Force Base doesn't want, because of the privateness of their...
Are we talking just Goodf, or are we subcategorizing? Because we have Shannon and Community under Goodfellow, and ASU and Howard under Goodfellow. Are we still talking about Goodfellow?
Well, we were with ASU and Howard, yes, because of the education connections between Goodfellow Air Force Base and ASU, which is huge.
So, we want someone underneath Mills.
Yes, yes, and the Shannon Community thing, we've developed partnerships, particularly Shannon, because of the ambulance service that the city has provided with that, the fire department services, so those become a part of it.
Mayor, I think, too, we've gotta put the chamber at the table with Goodfellow.
Yes, very, they're very important.
Okay, we have, including the city now, that we have, what, seven stakeholders that would be invited to that meeting?
And there would be some other community leaders, I'm sure, but...
Well, the county, I guess we've gotta put the county up there, too.
County as well. Yeah.
I think the county would probably be involved in pretty much every single one of them.
Yeah.
Jessica.
Let's move on to the next one, so we have Goodfellow, I think we have a pretty good list of stakeholders that'll be invited to that initial meeting to develop that message. So, next up, medical, healthcare, retirement. So, when you look at number two on the priority list, who do we invite as far as the stakeholders?
Okay, that's one I would say, Shannon and Community. Shannon and Community along with the educational services that are in-house teaching, ASU, Howard College, PT, nursing.
You know, I'm sure, I don't know when, but then, I'm new, so when was the last time we as a group of us sat down with the Shannon people and said, "Hey, what's missing? What can we do to help Shannon Medical or Community Medical continue to grow and develop, because they're important, not only employers, but provide services that we all count on? Quality of life."
Very good, so we have Shannon, and I would say Community as well, Shannon Hospital Community, ASU and Howard. What other stakeholders in this category should we also be invited to the table?
I think we should find out if there's somebody that kind of is involved with some of the retirement organizations, or so that we understand from retirees what they think is missing in this city, or what makes it...
Okay.
West Texas Rehab.
Maybe Baptist.
What was that again?
Baptist Memorial.
Baptist Memorial.
Does SAISD have some existing programs right now that relate in terms of training potential folks to go into that workforce, that exist today with medical, healthcare providers?
Not, I mean, they have dual credits, but that doesn't get into the technological aspect of it.
I know it won't put the... Medical technologists in Howard as a work co-op, is that still in play?
I don't know.
I'm not sure if it is, based off of the new nursing program, it could have been incorporated together, and that I don't know.
Medical assistant.
But certainly, Howard College is a trade school that can give us a lot of information, and ASU has a nursing program, so...
The school district and ASU does have some, they do have some dual credit programs, so...
Yeah.
Actually, we just invited...
Okay, there you go.
SAISD.
Stuck it up there.
SAISD have that Vocational Office Education Program, where students that have already acquired enough credits that they can, their senior year, they can go to school half-day and then be employed half-day, and so some of them, in fact, may, you know, become nurses' aides, or work in administration at the hospital, so...
Very good. I think we have a pretty good list up there, is anyone else, anyone else we need to, any group that we need to invite now?
Well, I think, yes, we kind of back up a minute, because we, number two is education.
We actually jumped to number three.
And we did, we went to three, medical, and so we kind of got part of two into part of three.
So, that's three, and so we had to jump back to number two, actually, that's education. You're doing a wonderful job, Sandra, thank you.
Yes, she is, thank you.
So, education?
Rick's been a great job.
I will commend Rick on how good a job he's done. That is outstanding.
He is.
ASU, Howard, SAISD.
Can you put it on top of those two?
Safety violation.
So, education, I think it's pretty straightforward so far, so...
Yeah, ASU today announced that they have in works $60 million in new buildings and constructions going out at ASU, which is a big statement about what's happening out there. This new trade school at Howard says it all, ASISD and the other school systems. We should include not just SAISD, but other local schools, whether it be...
Cornerstone.
Cornerstone, TLC, yeah, all of those.
Okay. All the ISDs, okay. Anyone else, or any other group that should be included in the education?
You know, the chamber at one time had a program specifically, Lorenzo Laster was kind of the, one of the main initiators of that, and I think he's still involved in that for the life of me, I can't think of...
It's P16.
Thank you.
Pre-K, all the way through four years of Bad Source.
So, I assume the chamber still does that, so if they do, then they should definitely be at that table as well.
Okay.
Do we know if Goodfellow still offers the accelerated courses, college courses? When I was getting my degree, I would go out at Goodfellow because they had troops coming in and out, and they didn't have time for a 16-week semester, so they had eight-week courses, and I actually was able to, you know, go through, so Goodfellow may be a stakeholder if they still offer those college courses, you know, on base, accelerated college courses on base.
Very good, so we'll definitely include them in there as well. Any others? I think that's a pretty good list right there as well, so we'll go to number four next.
And where are those sheets go?
They are up here, that would be...
Cultural, recreation, tourism.
That's gonna be a fun...
Certainly, what we wanna do is have someone like Howard Taylor, who has a big umbrella on the cultural aspect, so you want Howard Taylor, you want the Bob Bluehearts, the Fort, you want the Mr. Allen at Chicken Farm, because they have a whole element that's important.
One of the things that Howard will tell you is, he wants to try to do some more with cultural district. Since that report was put together about four, about four years ago, actually, the cultural district, it really hasn't done a whole lot, and Howard, in visit with him about six months ago, said he would like to expand that partnership so that he has an opportunity to go all the way from the Fort, all the way over to the visitor center. And I think it's important that when we start talking about this, we talk about the cultural district and what we can do to help support that.
Tourism is up there, so you certainly wanna look at your historic downtown district, and...
And your hotels and motels, wouldn't you want somebody?
Yes, ma'am.
On there for that industry?
Chamber, always.
Rodeo? You said the rodeo?
Rodeo.
That's called, yeah. Symphony, Civic Theater?
Performing arts, we kind of put that under.
Okay.
All of them under there. As well as the Angelo Civic Theater, and B Theater, and et cetera.
Ballet, yeah, yeah.
One moment, Rick is distracting Sandra, we're... That's a pretty good list right there.
That's good.
That's a really good list, let's go ahead and move on to item five on the priority list, which is...
Agricultural, manufacturing, oil and gas.
Better side than I do, right?
Surgery.
You did.
You know, years ago, they used to have a group of the manufacturing plant managers that would meet periodically, does anybody know if that's still here?
If they do, it's done under the chamber, Billy, I don't know if they do.
Because I'm thinking Herschville, and Ethicon, and...
Well, that's where the, that's the reason I put manufacturing up there, because to me, it's what they do, that is such an important part of this city. to me, it's, that's what they do, that is such an important part of this city, so, and it supports all those industries, and, but I don't know if they all get together, and that's certainly something we can, can do.
I would put the colleges...
Stock Show and rodeo.
Yeah.
Stock Show and rodeo, okay.
The other thing we are working on, and set and met with the Chamber and the CBB two weeks ago, is putting together an agricultural expo for next year. City of Curville does one, I think they pull in about a million bucks on that thing, just based off of how broad and deep the agricultural basis is, so, we know from this legislative session focusing on the farm bill, that there's huge interest, and a lot of, a lot of people around here are very focused on that, so, we know that we want to be a part of an agricultural expo opportunity.
Put the colleges on that one also, because they're the ones training for those commodities.
Okay, very good.
Put agricultural expo.
Halliburton?
Halliburton.
Well, Flu Delay, and there's a whole group of oil and gas companies here, so, I don't...
Devon.
Just put oil and gas companies, because we're not going to be able to list them all, and...
Is that all the stakeholders?
Texas A&amp;M, Ag group.
For the, for the council.
One thing I want you to keep in mind as well is that there's a whole list of items on or under each one of these categories and to pursue each and every single one of them all at once would be very difficult to accomplish. I mean, we do have as far as limited funds, but we can be creative in certain areas, you know, that doesn't require monies or funds. But as far as I'm concerned, these are items that are listed and quite frankly, when we hold a city council meeting and we have an agenda item, we need to ask ourselves, is this agenda item really addressing one of these?
Agreed.
And if, and if it's not, why should we even have it on the agenda? So again, on our part, when we start looking at our, our vision statement, we need to ask that question every single time. Is this really improving the city or is this something that we?
Well, and that, that would help the council raise its line of sight or its vision to have, to, to, to have those ever before us so that we are talking about those things that help us, help us achieve those things rather than some of those things that the staff could otherwise handle. We've got professionals to do that. So it may, may help, help the, the council do a better job at what really we're supposed to be doing.
Very good. Tommy, you made a very good point. And when I look at this vision statement, I think about the corporate world. You know, all the Fortune 100 and 500 companies have a vision statement. The next level down, they have a mission statement. What is it we're all about? Just as Daniel had put up there. But then on down there, they have individual objectives to accomplish the mission statement that drives the vision statement. So I'm just wondering, Daniel, if we are meeting quarterly on this strategic plan, maybe you could somehow help us with putting some objectives or maybe facilitate a meeting where we put some specific line item objection, objectives to our vision of what we want to be in the five categories that we've designated so that I think the more specific we get, the more accountable, Tommy, we can hold ourselves. Did we meet this?
I agree.
And Daniel, I think it holds you a little accountable too.
It sure does.
Because it says, it says, is it measurable?
Absolutely.
And you'll have to help us figure out, you know, how will we measure this particular objective that goes to education, a good fellow or, you know, whatever? Does that make sense?
Sure. I mean, it has to be specific, measurable, attainable, realistic in time, time base, you know? So there's certain things that we have to put in place.
In and of themselves develop the strategies to achieve the objectives, to achieve the mission, to achieve, achieve the vision. And not that the council needs to be involved in those strategies because you do have your professionals that will
Absolutely.
work through their own respective strategies in their own areas. So that might be something to help you all hold yourselves accountable.
Absolutely. And as I mentioned, that's a good point. As I mentioned a while ago, we have 19 departments, you know? So when we start looking at, and that's why we do a broader look as far as the city council, what are those top priorities that we can key in on and pour our, put our resources toward? But we also have different departments and perhaps an item that we're prioritizing doesn't really necessarily fall under, under that specific department or division. But regardless, they too would have their, their goals, their objectives and so forth that, that actually we could bring forward to the council members. I don't think that we sit down on a quarterly basis and go through every single department, but the, the top five priorities and then make available to you the other, the other objectives that they're working on. We can definitely do that.
Missed a slide?
Missed a slide?
Really missed the slides on the mission statement.
No, she saw it. Did she, you saw the slide on the mission statement?
Yes.
No, she, she did see that.
Okay.
We're good. Okay, that's, that's just part of it then. So again, thank you. We appreciate that. Mayor, I don't know if you want to take a quick break or you want to continue on to the next item, but we've covered this portion of it.
Does everybody want a quick break? Okay.
All right. Up next, as far as on our agenda, we have, or the itinerary, we have the current financial condition. Of course, before we start looking at any, any changes to the five strategic priorities that we have, we want to make sure that we understand where we are, what we're dealing with. And it kind of helps us make a little better decisions when it comes to adjusting those priorities as well. So with that said, I'd like to invite Tina to go ahead and do her presentation on this item.
All right. This first slide is just a reminder of what we discussed at our last council meeting. I'll remind you that if we do experience the same amount of sales tax revenue in August and September as we did in the same months last year, we do project a year-end deficit from the original budget for sales tax of about $768,000. This is a listing of all of the items that we were tasked by council with finding funding sources for. The current sales tax deficit as well as pay raises and stipends for city employees, which totaled about $1.4 million. And these are the ways that we were, we were able to find funding sources to cover that amount that we were tasked to find. We had a release of an obligation for a property tax rebate, a settlement, some savings and street maintenance. We also captured year-to-date salary savings and did some reallocations. And then we had some departmental savings and/or additional revenue streams that we were able to capture to cover the deficit. Yes, ma'am?
To that slide?
Yes, ma'am.
Release of obligation for property tax rebate. What, what is that?
That was related to Martha for Hirschfeld.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on that slide? So we ended up with a total captured excess revenue and savings of just over $1.5 million with a total current general fund need of $1.4 million for an excess of $143,000. Again, I'll remind you that we still have August and September to get through before we finish out the year. If we did end up where we could possibly projected a deficit of $768,000, we would still be short at year-end by $73,000. So your finance department is working every day to try to find additional funding sources should that be the case and be able to cover that as well. And with that, I'll answer any questions. Again, this is just current year picture and outlook.
I, I know that we always look at the worst-case scenario, but with two months positive, I'm, I'm looking at this, at this glass being all the way full, not just half-full. I think we're going to be better shaped than, than, than we really are predicting right at the moment.
I'll let you be the optimist.
We take a very conservative approach though, Harry, so.
I'm consciously optimistic.
Yeah. We look at at least a three, three-month trend and hopefully the next month will come out, come out better as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions related to where we are currently? Financial picture? Okay.
That's it?
That's it for me?
Okay. Thanks, Tina. Appreciate that. We'll move on to the, just an update on the top five strategic priorities before we move on to any new strategic considerations. First up, I'd like to invite Bill Riley. Of course, he's already done the workshop, the water workshop that we did just a few weeks ago. And he gave us a pretty good overview of the issues that we're dealing with. So I did ask him to kind of do an abbreviated one on this presentation as well. It's just kind of give us an update where we are and then moving forward, what we're looking at. So, Bill?
Thank you, sir. Since we did do the workshop, we actually covered a lot of ground the other night. So we will just kind of, kind of do a brief recap on some of the, I think, important issues and maybe focus on kind of the next steps that we need to be looking at as far as a future water supply and how we need to focus on that. One of the things that I think is, is important to consider in a, that a reliable water supply, of course, is very critical to just San, not just San Angelo, but every community. And I, I think it's interesting that these things that were, that a water supply enhances or you have to have or is very similar to the issues that you were just discussing, obviously for public health, public safety, economic prosperity, economic development is, is, it's crucial that you have a sustainable water supply. And from my experience, when industries are looking at a community, when, one of the major things they want to look at is do you have a sustainable water supply? And not just for the water that they need, but the issue that you were talking about as far as the workforce. They want to make sure that the water supply is there to support a growing workforce that would meet their needs in, from employment. So that's certainly important thing is in looking at, do we have a sustainable water supply? And then, of course, just the quality of life. And then some of the components, obviously, of a safe water supply is first off, is a reliable water, water source. How do we maintain that or get that source to the community? And then, of course, treating that water source and, and of course, then distributing that out into the community. So those are the main components that we need to focus on as we move forward in, in meeting our future water supplies for the city. Now, what I'd like to do at this point is kind of just recap some of the things that we talked about at the, during the workshop pertaining to our current water supplies and kind of looking at how that, where we are today and what we need to do for the next steps to begin to shore up a foundation for a, a long-term master water supply plan, if you will. So one of the things that we talked about was we have a, a lot of paper water, but we don't have a lot of, of wet water, if you will, available to us. Our current supplies, the primary supply is through CRMWD, which we have a contract for 15,000 acre feet a year. As we talked about, the reliable supply of Lake Ivy has, has dropped over the last few years because of the droughts to a little, just under 5,000 acre feet. So for a planning, even though we're still taking the 15,000 acre feet a year of water, the actually, since the reliable supply is less than that, for planning purposes, we have to focus on what our actual reliable supply is. It is possible that the, they could adopt the new safe yield of Ivy and by the contract, they could reduce our contract amount according to that, our percentage of, of the, what's available. And so we could see this number is what's available to us. So for planning, we have to plan on that number. Recap of, of the Hickory groundwater project, we currently, the, the project will produce about eight million gallons a day. The pipeline at maximum capacity is 12 million gallons a day and our current treatment capacity is at eight million gallons. So the ultimate capacity of the build-out of the Hickory aquifer would be 12,000 acre feet a day or just, just under 11,000, 11 million gallons a day. So we did talk about it during the workshop about the need to expand that out to its full capacity, but that is what the capacity and what the available waters from the Hickory aquifer is today. So combining those, we have a little under 14,000 acre feet of, of water per year available to us today. One of the things that we did discuss at the workshop was when we look at the reservoirs that the city has either water rights or contracts with, three of those reservoirs have basically, the, the yield from those reservoirs have gone to zero. So that means that the, the available or the reliable supply from those reservoirs is zero. While Ivy has not gone to zero, it's been less than 12 months of supply left. So the reality is, is that that could happen also. So when we look at that 4,800 acre feet a year from the short term, we need to be thinking about how we would, i- i- if that did happen, it's not reasonable to think that Ivy would go away. It's going to rain and there would be waters available again in that reservoir, but we need to think about a potential gap that we might have where that would not be available. So what I look at is in terms of, of Ivy is what would we do in the short term to bridge that gap? What are options available to us and how would we meet our, our needs during a time that we might not have Ivy? And I, and I think we've got several things to look at here is, is what, how do we bridge that gap in the short term? How do we meet our growth needs? And then what is the long-term supply that we need to, to have a sustainable supply out 50 years or more? So just kind of a recap of what we've looked at as far as projected demands. Does this have a pointer? This is actuals and I, I just put this up here because I think it's kind of interesting. This is what our actual demand was in 2012 and this is what our actual demand was in 2016. We've talked a lot about conservation and, and the per capita use in San Angelo and that has dropped. And, and that's a great thing as far as conservation. But when we're doing water supply planning, our per capita use is so low, we have to be real careful in projecting out from this number because as we develop more water supply, people have a tendency to use more water. So we, we need to make sure that we take that into account as we look out in, in the future, how much water we will need. These are the numbers that were projected by the regional planning group. I think those are a little bit high. So, but as I, I think I mentioned in the workshop, the number is probably somewhere in between these two in, in reality. But as we look, as we move out, by 2020, well, actually by 2019, we have exceeded, I mean, that's what our maximum supply is about, is about what our maximum demand is. So we've got to be looking for additional supplies even today for the short term. And of course, as we move out by 2040, 20, 2070, up to 50 years, we're looking at about a 10 to 12,000 acre foot a year deficit. So that's, that's the number, probably 10 to 15,000 acre feet would be what we would be looking in additional or new supplies that we would need out within the next 50-year period. So what is, what is the next steps? We've done, we've taken a, we've looked at a lot of options over the years. The regional planning process had identified several potential ideas for water supply for San Angelo. There's been a lot of ideas thrown out over the years, but what we have not done is taken a real comprehensive look at what those are and begin to evaluate those on an apples-to-apples basis and understand what it is, which ones are viable and how we would need to move forward in, in actually developing something that is a benefit to the city of San Angelo. Again, as it says, there is no silver, silver bullet. There is not one option out there that we know of today that we can say, this is it. This, this meets our needs, this solves our problems and we can move forward. So we really need to take a strong look at what, at all of these issues, all of these potential sources and begin to narrow that down into a, a plan that we can move forward with. And that plan will provide us a roadmap for developing supplies, for costs and, and implementation. So I think that's where we are today and where we need to begin moving forward. These are some of the, the options that have been looked at over the years. Some of these were in the state water plan. Some were just other options and we, we can talk about these in any amount that you would like. Some of these have been, already have been determined that are really not going to be feasible. There's, there's not a lot of potential in the Lipan Aquifer. The Sliker County option does not provide a real viable source to, to bring water to San Angelo. There's some unknowns about the brackish water in, in the Whitehorse and the Clearfork formations that still need to be explored a little bit. The Spence Reservoir, the, the pipeline from the Spence Reservoir is, to put that back in service is probably in the 25 to 30 million dollar range. And for the last several years, there's been no, not enough water to justify going and doing that. A couple that I think are, that we might want to explore and that might have some real viability, of course, is aquifer storage and recovery where we might take some groundwater from, from the Hickory and, and put it into, back into the ground when we don't need it and then have access to it when we do. Water reuse comes in a lot of different packages and, and we, we have about seven to nine million gallons a day. There might be a, a possibility of using that by putting it back into the river, having some environmental buffers there and then bringing that back out of the river at some point through either riverbank filtration or further down the river and maybe in, in Ivy's. There's just several options there that we need to really explore to understand how we can use our water to, to bridge that gap, to shore up our supplies or augment our surface water supplies. So we are proposing a, to do a, a preliminary engineering plan and that's actually on the agenda for next Tuesday. We'll be talking about more then. Basically, without going through all these, the idea is to begin to really look at all of these options, bring all of the, the potential options together and begin to vet those in a manner to, to understand if they are feasible or if they're not and take them off the table if they're not. And, and involve the, the water advisory board, council and the community in developing a real plan for moving forward. Again, that's, we, we have all of these ideas, we have potential options, but what we don't have is, is a real strong plan or a foundation for a long-term plan of how we can implement these or what we can implement to actually meet our, our current and future supplies. So this would be a beginning for that, to, to really begin to, to vet the issues and understand what's out there in, in the viability of any water supplies that we might have. And that would include also looking at a potential connection with the city of Abilene to, to bridge that gap. We've had some conversations with them. They're very amenable to the idea. So we will want to continue those conversations because they've, they've put some, implemented some programs that have really shored up their supply and they're, they're willing to talk about how we might take water from them on an emergency basis. And that might be the option that, that bridges that gap, that provides enough water for us that we can look longer-term out. But until we begin to really evaluate all those pieces, we don't know if that's the, the real answer or the long-term answer at this point. One of the things I think is important about doing this, this preliminary engineering plan is not only does it bring all the pieces together, what comes out of that is, is this, I'll call it a, an engineering report, feasibility report. That report allows us to, whatever the option that we choose, whatever potential supply that we need or that we think would work for us, it allows us to go to the state and, and ask yet state or federal funding. It also allows us to begin the process for a discharge permit so that we can put our effluent into the river. And it allows us to start the process of a bed-in-banks permit, which allows us to, with a bed-in-banks permit, the water that we put into the river remains our water and we can take that water out downstream. Without that, when you put the water in the river, it becomes a, the property of, of the state and therefore it's not ours. So those are just some of the pieces that we have to put in place. And by doing this, this preliminary engineering study and, and developing this engineering report, it allows us to begin that process. Basically, this is, doing this is the, this implementation plan is our roadmap. Again, coming out of that, we will have the, the in-place, the ability to understand or an understanding of what supplies are feasible, what the cost of those would be. And including in that, of course, is the improvements to our wastewater treatment and water treatment facilities, which are also a very important component of this. And a timeline and cost estimates for how we would implement this, this program. And then, again, that does not, that does not change the fact that we still need to continue to work with the West Texas Water Partnership on a long-term supply. And because as we mentioned earlier, we're, we're going to need over the next 50 years, anywhere from 10 to 15,000 acre feet a year of new water just to meet our projected growth needs. And, and back to your discussion of, of economic development and growing the workforce, we're going to have to have a, a long-term sustainable supply to be able to attract industry. And, and Mayor, in your conversa, comments about the, the tax rate, the same, one of the things obviously that impacts the tax rate is the lack of, of large commercial industry and business. It also impacts the water rate. Communities that have more larger users or industrial users have a tendency to have lower water rates because they have, I mean, those costs are, are shared there and they're paying for a larger part of the infrastructure that it takes to, to deliver that. So it all kind of, kind of works together, but you have to have, you have to have the water to attract the industry. So you've got to figure out how to pay for that upfront.
What was your population growth percentage per year based off of the?
It, it was about one and a half percent. And then we, at, I don't remember what year we went out and I don't, I don't have it on here, but we went just down to 1% just to be pretty conservative on that, that growth. But, but that, you know, this is one of those things, obviously, you know, we have to watch every year, I mean, to understand that. These projections, these projections came from the Texas Water Development Board. They've been doing that for several years as part of the state water planning process and they've gotten pretty good at it. So they, they're probably about as good of, of projections as, as there is right now across the state. And so we just went with their numbers. They were pretty similar to what we did. So I felt like theirs were probably as good as any. So that's pretty much the extent of what I have to, to offer today. Again, we'll, I'll be bringing the, a contract to move forward with this study to you on Tuesday. It's something we've been working on for, for some time. Another op, item that I wanted to mention, I don't have a slide for it, is the master plan that we have been working on for about the last year. That, that plan is, is directed more towards the distribution or the delivery system. And it's something that we have to do periodically and it's been some time since it was done. But that allows us to understand the capital needs that we're going to have for meeting projected growth in our distribution system and make sure that the line sizes are, are big enough and, and that we can deliver the appropriate amount of water for fire flow. It also looks at what our storage needs are for projected growth, you know, future growth, to make sure that we have the, the required amount of storage, both elevated and ground storage and pumping capacities and those things. And what we also included in that was a risk and condition assessment of our, of our piping infrastructure so that we could meld that into the street plan. And, and that, the condition assessment has been done. The consultant that was doing that is now taking the street plan and, and the condition assessment that was done for the water and wastewater utility and we prioritize those, those needs. And then they're melding that to see how that fits in, in the third year of the street plan out. Right now, for the first three years, we're, the water utility and water wastewater utility is following the street plan. There might need to be some adjustment in the street plans as we move out based on the, the critical needs of the water and sewer infrastructure. So we should have that completed within the next, I'm hoping, 30 days. And we're going to be taking that and making a presentation to the advisory board on that, results of that study at that time. The consultants have, have indicated that they feel like our system, while we do have some pretty old infrastructure, our system overall is pretty strong. It, it's sized appropriately. Our pressures are, are appropriate. And so there, it's a, it's been a pretty positive report so far on, on that report from what they've seen. So.
You know, we talked about earlier about the additional five wells and the water treatment plant. I don't believe we sort of put into motion a vote in terms of when we think the five wells need to be drilled, the Hickory Aquifer, and when we have the ability or feel like we need to expand the water treatment facility to take care of the increased millions of gallons. So that's something that, when do we need to be talking about that? Is that?
Well, we do have some, some issues surrounding completion of the current project that we need to, to get wrapped up. So I think as we finalize those things, we'll be coming back and having that conversation.
Okay. Got it.
Bill, thank you. Appreciate you. That's number one of the five priorities that we had. Next up is streets. I want to ask Patrick Farrick to come in here and do the presentation on this item. Patrick is our assistant director for, director for operations. So as he makes his way up. Again, we had streets. Next, after this one, we have salaries. We do have also development services that'll be coming up next after that. Patrick, go ahead.
Good afternoon. The story behind the streets priority hasn't changed much over the last couple of presentations that we've had over this. Nonetheless, it's still exciting to say that we have had some progress regarding that number two priority for council. For years or, you know, even decades in the past, council's priority hasn't been to focus on streets. They've decided, they chose to focus on something else, which led us to the situation we're in today and the, the huge backlog of work that needs to be done regarding our street infrastructure. However, in 2015, council set that However, in 2015, council set that new priority and, in support of that, allocated funding to help start addressing some of that backlog. What I wanted to do today is kind of give you guys an update as to what that looks like, what some of the projects we have going on are, what the status of each of those are, and then kind of talk through some of the ideas and some of the things that we have going and that we feel will help support this priority for us. Last year, we let the, or we were given the first of five bond issues over the course of 10, the next 10 years of $80 million. We received $16 million last year to start year one of the street reconstruction and mill and overlay processes. What you see here are a year, a portion of our year one projects. It's exciting to say we actually have a project in the works, and I believe it was in the works the last time we spoke with y'all, but we are even further along with that process. When we spoke last time, the infrastructure underneath the streets was being worked on, the water and the sewer utilities. Today, we are working on the streets. We're through with that portion of it, and we are working on the topping of that. So we're moving forward with MLK Boulevard. It was number one on our list of streets to address, so we got that one pushed out and got in in action. Number two, as Harry had mentioned earlier, the infamous Bell Street has made some substantial headway those last couple of weeks as well. It is out for bid on phase one right now, and we anticipate short any change orders or amendments to that bid. We hope to get that bid back on August the 3rd and see what those numbers come back for and hopefully get that project started as well. City staff is in the strategic planning portion of phase two and phase three to see how we want to let those phases. That's going to be, if there's an economic benefit to letting those two phases together and hopefully secure some money with, through economies of scale by letting those two projects together. They're about 70%, through in the design phase, so now's the time to start those discussions so that we're ready whenever that design wraps up. Some additional projects in year one that we have slated out of that $16 million is College Hills Boulevard and Southland Boulevard. Southland Boulevard has been awarded. What we're doing is, that little project there from Sherwood Way to the Sam's Signal, it's being constructed in conjunction with the Sherwood Way improvements that you see TechDOT doing right there. So as Reese Albert is moving forward on that Sherwood Way project, they'll seamlessly move into our project as well, so it'll look like one congruent project instead of a disruption of the citizens and the traveling public in two different phases, so. College Hills Boulevard is currently in purchasing to be let for bid. All the design work is done, so once we get that out and get it back, we'll start the mill and overlay process of College Hills.
On the Southland Boulevard, Sherwood to Walmart-Sams, what is that, about a block or something?
It's about a block. What we're doing on there is we're taking it from a four-lane road and we're adding a dedicated lane in there, a dedicated turn lane. So we're turning it into a true five-lane section between those two to help ease traffic and move that traffic a little more efficiently and line up with TechDOT's improvements on A couple months ago, Rick and his team brought to you guys a application for a grant through TechDOT to help revitalize the North Chadburn Corridor downtown here. That grant application is still in the works and we're waiting for award. In conjunction with that, in addition to Washington Avenue L, we've got that going on. It's designed, we're looking at a mill and overlay of that particular project. That's one that could potentially be done with the Benedetti machine as we get more familiar with that and really figure out what the capacities of that machine are, so. And as well as North Chadburn from 29th to 43rd is one that could potentially be used with that asphalt recycler as well. And I'll go into where we are on that little, fun little project here in a little bit. So the bond lettings are let every other year, so we'll have a year one, three, five, seven, and nine letting. Year three projects, these are primarily mill and overlay projects. Again, some of these, we hope to accommodate in a different, with the recycling method, but we don't know that for now, so right now they're staying on the list. As Bill alluded to earlier, some of these projects may move within the timeframe based on how their study comes back and what their priorities are underneath those streets, but still, they still remain as a priority on our list of streets that need to be addressed. Some more of the year three projects. Some of the year five projects, whenever we let that bond. Reconstruction of College Hills from Loop 306 to Avenue N, that one may move up in priority to help address some of the drainage issues that we have along College Hills, so that's something that staff is currently looking at, the possibility of doing that and help not only address the street problem, but some of the drainage and the utility infrastructure under it as well. There's a lot of hurdles and a lot of difficulties with that street just due to elevations, but I don't think it's anything we can't overcome, we just have to figure out what the best method is for that. Some more of the year five projects, moving through year seven. And then year nine projects are really slim, but they're two large projects and they're both reconstruction projects, which as we know are by far the most expensive way to rehave a street and the way that we're trying to prevent in all of our maintenance and all of our lower-level activities that we perform on the streets. We try to prevent this particular measure. Some of the special notations that we have beyond this year, in coordination with the Southland project, we also designed with the same engineering group, the downstream portion of Southwest, kind of right there by McDonald's. So that same engineering firm has been developing that little stretch of roadway there for us and designing it. So we're, we had some substantial project on one of our year three projects already.
Excuse me?
Yes, ma'am.
When you talk about that Southwest, you designed it to do what? I know it's not a good spot, but I know.
So to address many of the issues that's along there, not only to redesign the design structure of the street for reconstruction, but also to address the drainage and the flooding that we have over that low-water crossing. We have several, the clay soils right there don't really lend themselves to a solid structure for streets, and so the design firm's looking at, how do we mitigate some of those issues and get a street that's, A, not only passable during a rain event, but is also sustainable long-term, given the base infrastructure that we have in that area? As well as moving traffic more efficiently in that particular area, I think we all know that we do have traffic backup issues there. And so all of those components pull into that design phase when these engineering groups are looking at the projects. We will be coming to you guys at some point, or our engineering group will be, to ask for additional money in the engineering IDIQ to allow some of these design firms and engineering firms to continue design on these year three, five, seven, and nine projects. Council awarded some and we've maximized that award, so we'll be coming to you guys later. Our intention is at some point to relieve enough of the current burden on the engineering firm to allow us to start bringing some of those back in-house, but as it stands right now, we need progress. And utilizing some of the capacity of these design firms really helps us in that process and moves some of these projects ahead. The, one of the, one of the newer things that we have going on right now is the asphalt recycler. We were awarded this machine back in November. We do have it on the street, our crews are training on it, and they're getting better on it daily, but we're still in the training process. Once we get firm and are solid on it as a group, we'll be moving toward some of these streets that you see there on that list and start working through that list in a systematic fashion with that machine. Again, hopefully, when we get good at the machine, we can start pulling off some of those mill and overlay projects and reallocate that money into more of the recon work that needs to be done on some of the other streets in town.
Patrick, you're absolutely correct. I can see the difference in day, week one to where we are today, and it's a pleasure to drive on that asphalt today.
Our crews are working extremely hard and in some extreme conditions, but they're, they see the end result and they're as excited as we are about it, so they're really learning and stepping it up.
Patrick, I have a question. You know, when you were talking about the year one, three project and on and on, tell us, how were these streets? How did we put them in order? Why is it that we're doing this one instead of this one? Will you tell us that, please?
We did. Prior, or leading into this, we had a street, a consultant come in and give us a street study, which not only looked at the top of the street, but also the condition of the base, as well as traffic patterns and volumes and everything, that, all those components that go into a street. And they prioritize that need based on a PCI score, an overall score of the street.
So we are following their recommendation.
We are following their recommendation, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Patrick, I've got one question, and Tina, this might involve you also. The streets that involve more than two phases, like Bell Street, Chadburn, is there a way, and I don't know how it would affect our payout schedule and our debt schedule, but to combine those into just two phases to save mobilization fees by the contractor?
That's what we looked at, or that's what I alluded to earlier, is strategizing on phase two and phase three of Bell Street to figure out how those phases meld together, both from an economies of scale and a workability standpoint. We are working on the infrastructure underneath the street, so we have to take that in consideration as to how to gap those utility companies that are coming through. But absolutely, that's on our forefront of our mind when we're looking at all these projects, is how do we reduce the impact of those projects?
How do we ensure that the businesses that are on these streets aren't put out of business as we do these projects? Because I'm getting phone calls and complaints from businesses that say they're off 50% in sales because of the construction on MLK and that if it continues, they will be out of business. And so I want to make sure as we do this, which we obviously need to be doing, but that there's a game plan to ensure that people have the ability to get people to their front doors and their doors for business.
And that is one of the difficulties with projects like this, is how do you have the least amount of impact on those people that are in businesses that are adjacent to these projects? When we design these, and in with that design is a traffic control plan that hopefully allows traffic to continue to go in front of the businesses, albeit it, there is a little bit of a disruption and we know that, but we're conscious of it and we try to mitigate that as much as we possibly can, but there is some, but we're very aware of it and we don't want to, we want to get these projects in, get them done, and get, and move on so that that time of impact is as short as possible.
Hopefully, some of these businesses will visit us on August the 8th when we have the town hall meeting and talk about the Bell Street project so that they can have an opportunity for their input.
We are continuing with our seal coat project. We have a goal of moving through every city street in eight years with that. We're on year three of that, and we are still currently on schedule there.
I'm hearing complaints from people in Bentwood that as they walk out onto the street, their heels are melting into the street.
The seal coat process in of itself is not the most popular with citizens, but it's a necessity, unfortunately, for, to preserve the streets. What we try to do as staff is have that design work, or that work designed to get the minimal amount of rock on there that still allows a solid structure and allows that asphalt to be protected that we're putting down. Unfortunately, in the West Texas heat, asphalt gets hot and it does get a little, but it, we are aware of it, and that's one of the things that we're going to be looking at this year, too, is another, an alternative, potential alternative to the seal coat process. We're going to be doing a demo of a product and putting it on some of the streets that may help, that we may be able to apply in place of seal coat. So we're looking at several things progressively that we haven't looked at in the past that helps accommodate some of these, the concerns and the issues that we're hearing from the public in response to some of the things that we're doing. Y'all, at the last meeting, y'all awarded the 2017 seal coat. That's just a brief map up there, so just to kind of refresh you guys that we are doing a project this year with the seal coat. Again, the streets priority is moving forward, thanks to your funding and your obligation to that priority. We see some substantial progress and staff is currently looking at several different methods that haven't been utilized in the past to help further that priority and continue on. That said, we do caution some complacency as far as additional funding is concerned. We follow a construction index that rises rapidly in this, so last year's money is not going to be the same as this year's money. But we are making progress, we are trying to find other methods that we can work within those constraints and do the max that we can with what y'all have graciously given us, so. That's kind of the rundown of the street project and priority.
Thank you, Patrick. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Up next is, yes, sir, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The answer may be, that's another day, another discussion, which is, which is an okay answer, in my opinion. But there's not a one of us sitting up here at this table that doesn't have other streets in their district that are in every bit as bad a shape as the ones that you have prioritized through the study. Are y'all having discussions about those as well, or is, again, is that another day, another discussion?
They are definitely on our radar. I don't want to say they are not. What that study gave us is that score of all the streets, and hopefully with some of these new methods that we're trying out, we'll be able to get to those streets a little quicker. The reality of the situation is that within that $80 million, it lets us take care of our arterials and our collectors, those major roadways. But hopefully with some of the things that staff's looking at, we can start addressing all the streets and all the neighborhoods and get to those that may have never been addressed prior to. So we're trying, and that is a discussion that we will be having later on as well.
Thank you.
Patrick, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Michael Vane will be doing the presentation on the police station. This is one of the areas where, quite frankly, we may have to, will probably be, ended up amending, making some changes on our priorities based on his presentation. And with that said, Mike, go ahead.
Thank you, Daniel. Recall that the council directed the purchase of the First Financial Bank building with the idea that it could be an option for the police station and for a new police station, and it offered options for us even if we decided not to use it for the location or the building or both for the police station. So based on council's consensus, that police station, utilization of that property for police station has been put on hold, and so we are moving ahead with putting the Public Works Group in the first floor of that facility. Public Works, I'm sorry. That includes the Executive Director, Operations Administration, Shane and Patrick and their assistants, Engineering, Water Utilities Admin Staff, the Customer Service and Meter techs from, over in the Customer Service Building, and the Back Office Accounting folks, the Billing and Collection folks out of that building also. They'll occupy the first floor. That leaves the second floor available. And obviously, with Police Department high in our sights for needed space, Chief Carter has been talking to me about utilization of a portion of the second floor. He's considering what the optimal short-term arrangement is for the location of the different functions within the Police Department, and so he has identified a portion of the second floor he may be interested in utilizing, primarily office-type functions. I'm not sure they're ready to talk publicly about what those functions might be, but he is considering what would be the most effective and efficient arrangement for those various divisions. be the most effective and efficient arrangement for those various divisions during this short-to-mid timeframe that he hopes is the timeframe for the old facility. We also have a couple of departments which have expressed interest in space. The Fire Marshal's Office has some unique law enforcement-type needs that are not entirely satisfied with the office arrangement they have now, and so we will be talking to them about what their needs are. And the Public Information Office, as you're aware, has been talking about development of a small studio to facilitate some of their production work. They have dedicated, even legally restricted monies, which would be available for capital expenditure to equip their space. The Fire Marshal's Office, I think, is going to need money if we need to equip or modify their space, and probably Police, in the same vein, will need some money to make that happen. So, we will work those issues as they progress, and obviously be coming back to council if there's some need for additional action related to that. So, with that being the update on the First Financial Bank building, we still need to develop a path forward for this objective, the police station. Thank you. Thank you. We think Chief Carter and I have talked about assembling a stakeholder group to consider the city's options and needs related to a new facility. Specifically, the group we've come up with, or thought about, or would propose, would be the chief, one of the assistant chiefs, the mayor, a council member, the municipal court judge, and me. And that would be the core group that we would start with to begin considering with this new council, what our path forward should look like. Recall that the price state estimates associated with the previous project were $38 to $40 million, and that was kind of a tough pill to swallow. And we just need to start the conversation back up with the stakeholder group.
Department and First Financial are, in my district, I'd like to set on that particular stakeholder group meeting.
Well, that's a good point. We would love to have that group put together, and if you're interested, Mayor, unless you have other suggestions, I'll, if you're interested, contact me, and we'll just invite, we'll make sure we won't have a quorum.
Okay.
And we'll invite interested council members and go with that other group. We would obviously want to develop some consensus on that committee, and as necessary, bring it to council for complete buy-in on those concepts or action items which may come up. Chief Carter has a specific timeframe in mind, that he's taught, he doesn't want to delay it. He doesn't want to kick the can too far down the road. You know, we talked about, he has, trying to make the best arrangement for this short term, but he does want to keep moving toward a new facility, or some new arrangement. So, would propose to begin meetings in September, or a timeframe that makes sense. I think we've got lots of meetings planned in August related to the budget. If we're all wore out in September, and we want to start in October, we can do that, but...
As it relates to the First Financial Bank, so based off of what you just presented to us, at what capacity are we in terms of space at this point, if we choose to do, as you just outlined? Is that 80% of the space being utilized at that point? Is it 50%?
I'm sorry, good question. The first floor would be fully occupied by that first group that we talked about, that Public Works Group. Now, that is a big space, and there'd be lots of space between. There might be more space available there. Allison has developed that plan, and I think she's actually put bodies in offices where they think it makes sense. On the second floor, nobody has been committed anything at this point.
But that's what Ms. Frank was looking at in terms of potential?
A portion of the second floor. And I don't think, between Chief, the chief, the Fire Marshal, and the Public Information Officer, that all of that second floor is committed. I think there's still some space available. And, of course, our objective, when we, when council... When we talked about moving Public Works in, our objective was to do as little as we could get away with in a way of remodeling, or renovation, or retrofitting. We're going to have to do some security and IT-related things, and that would, that's something we'd have to do on the second floor also. But most of that space, if those three go on the second floor, most of that space will be committed, but there should be some leftover. We'll just have to see what their specific plans call for.
And did we end up buying the furniture from First Financial?
We took, we asked for bids, and their bid was the lowest. Nobody else proposed used furniture that I'm aware of, and so... Were they quotes? Is that what it was? Quotes? And I'm not sure where we are in the process, but it looks like we're headed in that direction for the furniture. Very favorable prices on some very high-quality, some of that furniture is very high-quality. So, very, because it's used, because it doesn't have to be delivered or moved, the prices came in very favorably.
Great.
If it's okay to have three people on that group, I'd be willing to work with you and Harry, so if that doesn't cause problems or create heartburn for anybody.
Okay.
I have a question. Can you sort of bring me up to speed? Initially, I thought we purchased First Financial. That was going to be the new police station. And then, that plan changed, and it sounds like maybe it has changed back. Can you sort of...
Sure. The bank started making plans for a new facility, and I think had conversations with staff and council about the possibility that it might be a useful facility for us. They, I think, were aware, some of their past staff were aware, that we had both a customer service building issue and a police station issue. And so, I think there were some conversations about, could this facility be something that would be a solution for the city? And council, council said, yes, that could be a solution for us. And in our discussions, council said that could be, that is the size facility that could be, could satisfy all or a portion of the police station need. And so, we hired an architect to work, do some work for us, and the price tag came in at, I think it was $38.5 million for a remodel, and $40 million and a small amount of change for scrape it off and start fresh. Well, that alternative was going to be a tough one, because it's such a terrific facility. It's... And about that time, the economy kind of went, was in decline, and nobody thought it was a good time to ask the voters if they wanted to borrow that kind of money, which would have to be funded through a tax rate increase.
Okay.
And then, we had the election, and Chief Carter came in and said, my number-one priority is pay for the existing officers. Number-two priority is increasing the number of officers, and the building would fall to number three, in my estimation. That's from Chief Carter. And council, I think, felt similarly, that we do need some sort of a solution for the building, but that pay and the number of officers, based on their own perceptions, I think, also on what they were being told by Chief Carter, that was not inconsistent with what the previous chief had been telling us, that the pay for the officers and the number of officers were major issues. And so, during the purchase, the discussions about the purchase of the facility, we had talked about the possibility that the building could serve other needs, other city needs. And so, when it looked like the tide was turning against this project as a police station, we started talking about the possibilities with staff about what would be appropriate for a use for that, because obviously, it's a huge facility compared to our customer service facility. So, how do we make the most out of that facility? Well, when you came in today and were challenged to find a parking space, you can see that this campus is challenged, taxed, not just because of construction, but just because of lots of activity around here. And so, we talked about that work group who usually worked together and worked well together, being those that would occupy the first floor. And so, I would say the building is not going back, or the tide is not changing that it would become a police facility, but that police would occupy a portion of it.
And we would still be looking at a new facility for the police station down the road?
I think that's what Chief Carter would say, is that this would be a temporary measure to get the best value he can. He's thinking about the facilities he has. He has more than one facility. And I think if he occupied space in this facility, he would be thinking about pulling another building out of service. That might allow us to either use that building in a different way, or to put it on the market and get something for it.
All right, thanks. On the utility bills in First Financial, because I know that one of their big issues with that building was the ever-increasing, very-high utility bills.
That is the price. You know, we received a favorable price for the building and paid what the appraiser said was well below market for that building. But that's the price we're going to pay, is that it is a large, old building. It is relatively inefficient compared to a new facility, and that's going to be part of the price we pay. We think that's going to be in the range of $90,000 to $100,000 a year for all the utilities. And our facility maintenance manager, Ron Lewis, has already started looking at an option for a control system which would help manage that. He thinks, his initial impression is that a new control system would pay for itself. It'd be just a question of time before, be a question of how much time it would take for that break-even point to occur. But he's already started working on that. We closed Tuesday, and they're already working on options for increasing the efficiency. There are going to be limits because of the design of the building and the age of the building, but it is, that's the price we're going to pay for that building, is that it is, from an energy standpoint, it is not as efficient as a new facility would be.
Have we ever thought, or was it ever in consideration, that we would lease any of the other spaces on second floor to people who are not employed in the city?
We can do that. We could look at that. Our first priority has been, how do we accommodate the police station needs? While it's not going to be a police station, how do we accommodate those needs? Because that was identified as one of council's top priorities. If at some point in the future, we satisfy PD in a different fashion, and we have that, that would be something to think about, if we have that space available. I know the bank used that to help offset their utility costs, is what they've told us.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate that. Next summary update is going to be with Lisa Marley, our HR Director. And Mike, if you could click forward one more of the... And she will be discussing, actually, the strategic priority the city council, previous city council established for salaries. I just get a sort of update and kind of a look forward.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Manager, and staff. I'm to talk to you today about our salary history and where we are presently with our pay ranges for employee staff. And I thought for the benefit of our new council members, I would start a little bit with the history and where we have come over the years. We have records that go back 36 years to 1981, on how pay raises were issued. And I've sent out handouts, and I think the history is in handout number two at this point. But we went through and we averaged them, and they're on the screen here, where the Fire Department averaged over those 36 years a 4.2% increase. Our general employees averaged 3.19, and the Police Department averaged 4.42. During those 36 years, there were three years that were treated differently than all the rest. In 1995, there was no pay increase given to any employees citywide. In 2010, there were no increases for any employees to their salary, except that PD did receive a stipend based on seniority per an agreement we created in the Meet and Confer contract. And then, in 2016, if you recall, last year, we did have increases to all of the police officers in varying amounts based on their rank. And then, Fire received a 5% stipend, and then our general employees received a 3% stipend. Those stipends are lump-sum value that is a one-time-only check. It's not added into their base pay. It's merely income for that year. In 2007, the city council authorized us to solicit an outside consultant. We use public-sector personnel consultants out of Arizona, PSPC. And at that point in time, the consultant worked with our sitting council at that point, and came up with the 13 cities that they wanted us to be compared with. The cities were based on per capita size and some other factors that were taken into consideration. And so, those 13 cities are listed on the screen here in alphabetical order. Abilene, Beaumont, Brownsville, Denton, Colleen, Lewisville, Lubbock, Midland, Odessa, Temple, Tyler, Waco, and Wichita Falls. The midpoints of all of our pay ranges is what we compare with those cities. And we do that for a little over 200 positions every other year. In 2008, the results of that very initial survey, and keep in mind, when the consultant came in, that was the first time that they, we had done a salary survey here in over 20 years. And so, the survey revealed some really disastrous pay scales. They were very, very off-track, very low. And the best that we could do financially with the money that we had to work with was to bring all of those ranges up to 85% of the average of those 13 cities. So, the way that we do these studies now is we will pick the most common positions that you would find in any city out of the 13. We try to come up with a position in each of the 50 pay grades that we have, and again, those are on the handouts that you have, the list of all the cities by pay grade. So, we pull those, and, you know, obviously, we have an airport. Not every city has an airport. Obviously, we have a Fort Concho. Not everybody's going to have a Ford. So, we have to be careful in the positions that we pick to survey. And then, because every city has a different width of range from minimum to maximum, you know, some scales may be really wide, some may be very narrow. The one common portion of a pay scale is their middle, whatever the middle is. The one common portion of a pay scale is their middle, whatever the middle is. And so the HR best practice that has been established in long running is that you look at those midpoints and you compare those midpoint to midpoint for those existing jobs. So what we do is we send out a job description for each one of those positions and we send them our pay ranges of each of those positions. And those thirteen cities respond with what they believe matches up based on job description. Don't think that it's just on titles because we all know that titles can be different from job to job. So the surveys are conducted every other year. As you might imagine, it's a pretty intense project, so it's something that we try to do every other year. And the last two were in two thousand and fifteen and then just a little bit earlier this year. We just finished it up. Back in two thousand and fifteen, our general employees, which is non-civil service positions, came in at eighty-seven-point-nine percent of the average midpoints for those comparable cities. In two thousand and seventeen, we dramatically increased up to ninety-five-point-one percent for all of our general employees. And that information, I think, is in handout three that shows the comparison by grade for each pay grade between the two years. We've tried to analyze this information to find out why it is we jumped somewhere. And I think it's certainly a combination of many factors. First off, in two thousand and fifteen, we did jump those scales by a dramatic amount. We moved them up to five-point-one-two percent, if you remember, and for the general positions. And most cities, we found, averaged somewhere around three and several cities didn't do any increase. So I think that helped us in this year when we, when we looked at it because that had jumped us up. The other thing that happened was we had, out of those thirteen cities, there were two cities that did not respond in two thousand and fifteen but did in two thousand and seventeen and vice versa. We had some that did not respond in two thousand and seventeen but did in two thousand and fifteen. So I think those combination is what helped us get so high in addition to the five-point-one-two percent increase that we saw. Now, that was just for our general salaries. Let me show you here what the fire scales did between the two years. You'll see I have those listed by the five ranks, where they stood in two thousand and fifteen and where they stand now in the two thousand and seventeen scale. Now, if you keep in mind that the city general employee scales come in somewhere around ninety-five percent, I would say that the eighty-eight percent, all of these three positions that are in the eighties should be a focus that we look at for the upcoming year. Here's where we stood with police as of this year, the comparison between two thousand and fifteen and seventeen. You can see why the focus was on police after the two thousand and fifteen numbers came in because they were significantly lower than many of the other positions. And then as a result of our meet and confer contract that we have that will expire this September, it has brought their positions up, all of them into the nineties. And so I think that's positive and I think it's exactly the results that we expected to see as a result of our meet and confer contract. So if we drill down the results of this year's survey, there's probably a small handful of positions that I noticed are misgraded. They're just outliers that I believe are either graded too low or too high and they skew some of the numbers. And we can fix those without any additional cost to the budget. We just need to get them properly graded. So I think as a result though, the fire group that we spoke about or that I described a minute ago is the group that we really need to concentrate on as far as salary ranges. But as a whole, I think as a city, we are really sitting in a good position with our general employee pay raises, pay ranges. So as our challenges ahead, I think, you know, it's very important that we don't lose ground with the great progress that we've made. We need to stay on top of that. We have to remain competitive and be able to attract new talent. And we just have to be diligent in keeping our existing staff. Our turnover numbers right now are very low and we're very happy about that, but we are having difficulty attracting people. It's very hard. And so, you know, I think as a council, you need to keep that in mind as you determine what we need to do in the budget. Obviously, if you wanted my opinion, I would suggest that we look at something with fire. And then in the future, for employees, all employees except for PD because of meet and confer, I think we need to look at a way that we can come up with pay increases that go back to the evaluation process again. Maybe connect it to the CPI, you know, whatever factor that we could implement to make pay increases more of a part of our budget on an ongoing basis. The, you know, in years past, we've always done evaluations, performance evaluations. But in some years, when our salaries have struggled to stay up with the averages, we have not awarded pay increases in connection with performance. We've done it across the board or something. So it'll be great now that we are, you know, sitting in a very decent position to perhaps consider going back to using performance evaluations as the factor for rewarding employees by salary. And I would be happy to take any questions.
I have a few questions.
Yes, ma'am.
One, I know that in the previous, the councils have used the thirteen cities as shown above. But one of the issues that I've always had a problem with is that it's great to look at how those people pay their people. The problem is how do their sales tax and property taxes align with ours? Because it's great to say we want to be competitive with Midland, Odessa, but Midland's sales tax revenue, not even taken into property tax revenue, is two-point-four percent higher, two-point-four times higher than we are. And it's growing. Odessa's is one-point-seven to one, no, one, yeah, one-point-seven to one-point-six times higher than us. When we look at Abilene, Midland, Odessa, Wichita Falls and San Angelo, where you have the lowest sales tax collections of all of those cities.
Yes. It's true.
It's a factor. So I look at it and say, I think employees are the number one asset we have in any business that we have and the city is certainly a part of that as well. But we also all have to be fiscally responsible and we need to make sure that we understand relative to who we're comparing ourselves because you can't, apples and apples aren't apples and apples to Midland, Odessa or even Abilene who has anywhere from one-point-seven to one-point-five times the sales tax. And if you look at the property taxes, it's even larger and greater than ours.
Sure.
I'm a big believer in reviews, evaluations and merit awards versus across the board raises. I'm also a big believer that you look at your local market and look at where it's possible comparable comparisons, market values. Because many of us choose to live in San Angelo because what San Angelo is and what it is not. And when you look at those cities that are up there, I wouldn't choose to live in any of those cities. And so I think what we also want to be able to take into consideration is where there are certain positions that are comparable to other positions in other private sectors in this business, how are those people paid? Because so often in the private sector, there aren't benefits in retirement. It's just salaries. And so we need to understand how our people, our very important city employees are paid relative to comparable positions within the city we live, play and work.
Yes.
So, and I'm not a big believer in comparing ourselves to thirteen cities out there who I'm not sure what we all have in common other than some statistics.
Sure.
And maybe those statistics, numbers are numbers and you can make whatever out of them that you want. I want to make sure our people are taken care of, that we have employees that are paid and not feeling like they are not valued because they are valued and they're a very important part of how we function, how we function effectively and how on a day-to-day basis we get things done. So they are very important to us. And I also know the following, that if you talk to most psychiatrists, psychologists, they will tell you that pay is somewhere number five on the list of making people happy.
Right.
So with all that said, we want to take care of the employees. I also know that the average, if you read Wall Street Journal, Kipinger Letter, any of those, salary increases at maximum over the past few years have been about one-point-five percent. Business hasn't been great across the world.
Right.
And San Angelo's one of them. And so I say the following, never, never not take pride in your employees and what they bring to the table, but also be very fiscally responsible and make sure that the numbers we're looking at are relevant to the numbers we have available to us based off of sales tax and property tax. Because already, I think our salaries, when you combine everything together, over fifty percent of the money's available to us. And I want to make sure that as we look at employees, we also understand that many citizens that we have didn't get any pay raises. In fact, they feel like they're going in the hole these days. So it's a huge, big story. It's a very complicated story. I know the two areas that you can't compare to local enterprise and that's fire and police. And those are certainly very important to how we take care of the citizens on a big scale and big basis. And they're not something we can just put an ad in the paper and expect to recruit. A lot of training and expense involved in those two areas. So I know that they're a very important part, but I also say all city employees are a very important part of making our city function.
Sure.
And very valued.
Thank you, Mayor. I know during the orientation, we received a list of, because I wasn't there, if you recall, and we did receive your list of questions. And I asked that the Texas Workforce Commission provide us with the state numbers for San Angelo on the private sector. They promised that to me by the end of July and I received it last week. So I will start comparing our positions with those that do match up favorably and will be happy to get that out to you and to the council. I would also entertain that perhaps it would be an item that I should put on the agenda to discuss which cities we'd like to put together. I can get the list with property tax and sales tax and put that in the future for us to determine what those cities should be. I know at the last meet and confer meeting, the police department or the police group did talk about perhaps looking at those cities and seeing which ones we should compare ourselves with. So it's a timely request and I think it's good for us to look at that.
I just want to close. Employees are important to me and they're important to their cities.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Have information, when an employee does leave, do we know when they go to another city, what city they have gone to? Or do we really, if they leave, most of the time, we just don't know where they're going?
Well, we get, we do an exit interview process with them and it's a written document. Not all, it is a voluntary thing. So, you know, the ones that we get, we have that information. Some people don't share that.
Right.
Right.
To me, I mean, if you had enough, there may be some data there so that we know if they're going to another city to work. Then that would be helpful for us to know that in fact, we are in competition in some cases with some of those, some of those particular cities.
And I think that's more applicable to fire and police than it would be to our general employees, but that will be data that I can easily collect. Absolutely.
The other factor is cost of living index.
Sure. Sure.
Any other questions?
Lisa, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Great information.
Up next is John James. He will be talking about the development services, the processes, the changes they have made and also looking forward to what we can expect. John?
Thank you, Daniel. Just going to briefly go through, some of you may have seen this presentation similar to the one I did for council back in April, but I realize many of you are new and so maybe haven't seen this. But first, I want to take us back to two thousand and fourteen is when the city and our staff started looking at how can we improve the development process and the development review process. And this is a list of the goals that were established then, including reducing review times, providing better information to the citizens and applicants, good customer service, ensuring our ordinances are up to date. That's something we're continuing to do. And then ensuring consistency. One of the things we heard was people in a similar situation weren't treated similarly. So making sure that whether it be an application, review or an inspection, that we're treating everybody the same. So some of the things we've done over the past two or three years, we created a one-stop shop where any applicant has one place to come to, to submit their application, to ask questions. They don't have to go to engineering for one thing, to the fire marshal's office for something else, to planning for something else. We coordinate that all in one location. Excuse me, concurrent application reviews. In the past, some of our application processes, you had to do step one before you could move on to step two, et cetera. Now we allow for more concurrent reviews. So you can submit two or three different applications that are required all at once and we can review them all at the same time without waiting for one to happen then the other. We've, we're really trying to get people to do pre-application meetings. Almost everyone that does these are pleased with the results. That's where we ask developers to come in when their project is just an idea. Tell us what they want to do and we can give them feedback on their project rather than waiting when they actually are ready to apply and then realize that there's some stumbling blocks that they may have to address. So that's something not enough people are taking advantage of. But again, the ones that do, that's been very helpful. We have weekly review meetings where all the relevant staff sit down around a table. Sometimes if you send out reviews to all the different groups that review them and they do it independently, we've found that putting them all around the same table gets, you know, you see something, you hear a fire marshal say, oh, well, you got to do this and make that change. And so then the building official says, well, if you do that, you're going to have to do this. And so having everyone review it at the same time gives us some benefits as well as to the customer. Single review report, again, that sort of consolidation, if you're a developer, you come in for an application, we give you one list of comments. You don't get one set from engineering, one from planning. One of the complaints we used to get was, you know, you'd get a list of comments and they would think that was it. And then maybe two days later, you'd get another list of comments from someone else. This way, they get one, one paper with all of the comments from every different group. I mentioned consistency a minute ago. Consistency to ensure that both the plan reviews and inspections are done similarly. We have different building inspectors, different plumbing inspectors doing different parts of town. So we have one staff member who her job is to ride around with the inspectors, for example, and make sure that the inspector working on the north side of town is reviewing a plumbing inspection the same as the guy on the south side of town. We've also made some improvements to the process, including standardizing the submittal requirements, use of checklists. One of the things that we got dinged on in the past is we gave them their review, they submitted all the responses and said, here, we've addressed everything you said. And then we turned around and said, oh, by the way, we forgot a couple of things that we didn't catch the first review around. We've eliminated that to a large extent by using these checklists so that people aren't having to rely on their memory for plan reviews. They're going through these checklists. The flip side of that is it helps the applicant too. Those are available to them and they know, here are all the things we're going to require them to submit for an application. We've revised all of our handouts to be more user-friendly, partly based on input we solicited from the development community. And something we've recently done is streamlined our field inspections. All of our inspectors now have iPhones and they can actually report the results of inspections while they're in the field. In the past, they would, they would do all of their inspections for a morning, bring that back into the office and input those early afternoon and then go out and do it again in the afternoon. And so a builder that may be out there waiting for, hey, did my inspection pass? They might have to wait three or four extra hours before they got that. Whereas now, our inspectors can submit that immediately from the field and help move things along more quickly. And so this is some of the things we're still working on that we're rolling out and plan to do in two thousand and seventeen. Obviously, we've talked a lot about the electronic permit software, tracking, plan review, doing all of that electronically, allowing plan reviews to be submitted online. all of that electronically, allowing plan reviews to be submitted online. That began testing in April. We're still working some of the kinks out of that with the software developer, but we're hoping for a full rollout of that where builders and other applicants can start to submit those applications.
Like, it's maybe September 1, we're going to have it? Is it?
At this point, we've got two primary issues that we're trying to wait to get resolved. One of them is fairly straightforward. It's just linking our payment system, our existing payment system with the new software. I'm told that's just a matter of a few weeks to get that turned on. The only other piece is a software glitch where two pieces of software aren't talking to each other. That, the software company is working on a solution right now. They've been on that for a month or two now, and so, we're sort of at their mercy until they can figure out what, why that's not communicating. But as soon as that happens, we're ready to start rolling it out.
With that said, I think that is something that the council may want to talk about. I think we need to assemble a group, because if you recall, when this was put in place, it was put upon staff to try and implement it. There wasn't, the consultant was not hired to implement it. Well, John Staff is not IT specialist, so they've done a good job of moving through the process, even though throughout that, they've lost, the people who were in charge of it have left the city, and I can tell you, they have gone to other cities. So, then you're left with trying to train a new person. So, what I'm getting at is with this last component, if it's becoming an issue like that, we may want to look at, okay, what is it going to cost to, if it's going to cost X amount to hire the person to actually make that link work, then it's probably worth that at this point, because that's the last component. So, we may want to, I think we need to talk about that probably at a separate meeting and come up with, I think John has already asked them the question as well, you know, what would it cost to get you to finish this off for us?
Right. We've asked that question. We haven't gotten the cost estimate yet for that, and I-
Tell them, because they delayed responding to you. It's half price.
Thank you.
I wish it worked that way. One thing I didn't mention is the, some of the aspects of the software, for example, the inspectors in the field, those pieces are already in, they're already working, you know, they're in place and rolled out already. It's just the customer side that's not there. But I mentioned the online payment system. Once that's live, then any permit that doesn't require plan review, which would be basic plumbing permits, electrical permits, those should start being rolled out as soon as we get that payment system set up.
Is that inclusive of residential as well as commercial?
It is.
It is. Okay.
Almost all of our permits would be able to be applied for online.
So, that wasn't an issue separating residential versus commercial? So, it's software programming that tackles all those?
Correct. Now, there are a couple of kinds of permits. Some permits, for example, if a homeowner is pulling the permit themselves, by state law, we have to verify that they have a home state exemption. That's something that they cannot provide us online, so they will have to still come in the office to provide that documentation. So, while many of the things people could sit at home and never have to walk into our office, there are a few types of permits that people will still have to come in.
One other component I probably want to talk to you all about is, is we have some customers, or quite a few customers, who like to charge. They have several, you know, projects going through, so they don't like coming in and paying every time. This current module doesn't allow that, but we could add to that. Now, that may be something that we even look at as a convenience charge, you know, if you want that, then, you know, we're going to buy it upfront, and maybe we recapture those dollars, you know, through a fee associated with the convenience, but we'll be talking to you all about that, too.
One of the other things we're looking at this year is a development handbook, basically creating additional flow charts and handouts. I think what we've done a really good job at is working with the big developers, national chains, those type of folks who do this kind of work everywhere. What we consistently hear from them is, is our process is quick and easy, and I think where we still need to make some improvement is on the little guy, basically, whether it's a homeowner or a small business, people who aren't used to doing this every day.
The other people.
Exactly.
That's where you hear the-
And so, that's, that's one of the things we know is a focus area right now, is to work on that piece of it, and we think having some of these handouts and flow charts and things that help explain the process to them will really move us forward on that element. And then, again, continuing to look at ordinance amendments, you'll see, as a council, ordinance amendments from us every couple, three months. We've got a whole list of things that we'd like to see updated and changed to help us move forward. We're just bringing those to you as we can, and so, we'll continue to do that for the foreseeable future. I wanted to talk just briefly about our customer service surveys. Part of this process, back in 2014, when they identified ways we could improve, we started surveying our customers to see, well, how do they think we're doing? And what we saw is from 2014 to 2015, we saw a big jump in the number of people who said that the process was working for them. That flattened out from 2015 to 2016, but that's partly because we got to that 90% approval. It's a little harder to, it's easier to go from 80% to 90% than it is to go from 90% to 100%. But in 2016, about 90% of the respondents answered all of our questions positively about how the process treated them. Some of the, one of the things we track is commercial plan reviews, and if you look back at the first half of 2015, for plans that did not require any revisions, those were averaging a 25-day review time. In 2016, that's been reduced to 12 days of review time. For those applications that did require revisions, in other words, the application didn't have everything we needed to make the decision, we had to send it back to the applicant, and they had to get back to us. That creates some extra delays, but those have been reduced from an average of 60 days to an average of 19 days. So, I think we're on track, making the progress we've hoped to make.
I would say that you should be very proud of that, and I would also say the following, I think it behooves us all to make sure we quote the right information, because over the past few months, it was very public that they said, well, you could get one in two days. The average is two days now. Well, that's not fair to you guys, and it's really bad information. So, the person who comes in and can't get one for seven days is now mad because they've been told over and over again, we've improved it so much that it's down to two days now.
Right.
That would be extraordinary, but virtually impossible in today's world. So, I want to make sure that when we talk to people, that we don't misquote the timeframe it's going to take to get this done.
Sure. And I think some of the confusion is different types of permits.
Sure it is.
For example, a house plan permit, that does take two days versus a commercial. I mean, this includes things like the HEB, the county jail, and so, obviously, those types of huge projects take much longer.
Well, we've been pretty consistent on residential, keeping that about two days at this point.
Right.
So, there we are at the two-day review.
We just need to make sure when we speak-
And I think people get that confused. They hear two days, and they think it's for everything.
Of course they do, because that's what's thrown out there. We need to make sure that we take the pressure off of them by making sure people understand it's, the timeframe is different.
And as we're looking at averages, one thing the average doesn't really tell us is how many, how many take a really long time versus, you know, average kind of masks, a wide range of numbers. And so, one of the things I wanted to look at was how many of our reviews are done within three weeks, which is our goal. That's stayed pretty consistent, but I think where we've seen the biggest improvement is in cutting down those reviews that take more than six weeks. We've moved those, we haven't moved them quite to the three-week goal, but we have moved them into that three to six-week category, so quite a few less projects are taking more than six weeks. So, again, I think we're making progress, but we know we've still got a ways to go. So, that's kind of an overview of where we are. Be happy to answer any questions.
Just to comment-
John, you said that for those individuals that come in and do a pre-meeting, generally, you have very, very good results with that, the customer has very, very good, and they're pleased with it. How do we get that information out to more people in the community so that they understand if you come in and visit ahead of time and bring the whole project in, that you can typically get through this in a lot less time and with a lot less heartache? Because, again, I think it's key, and you've told me on a number of occasions, and so, I tell, anytime somebody calls me, I tell them the same thing. But how do we get that spread out, that information out further, so that people will utilize that?
Well, that's a good question, and we're, that's something we're starting to think about. Like you, when people come to me with complaints, I tell them about this process, so at least next time, they'll know about it. We do see the number of people doing that ticking up a little bit, but there's still the majority of our customers don't come in for a pre-application meeting. Most of them just walk right in with their permits. Now, for a lot of them, they know what they're doing, everything works fine, and there's no problems. So, one of the survey questions we've asked in the past is if you didn't do a consultation beforehand, why not? And one of the most popular answers to that question is, I know what I'm doing, and it's not helpful to me because I-
But the unfortunate thing is, is those are the types of people that are also going to be the ones where you get the most complaints from, if they understood the process upfront, that we've got people willing to sit down with them and work this. That's why I say there's opportunity there for us to get the information out, to do this, these pre-application meetings.
Sure. And I'd welcome any thoughts you might have. We might look at working with Anthony and Brian and doing some media-type things to help encourage that. I think maybe this development handbook that we're working on might be able to get that word out, too, with more information on our website, as well as actual physical document that somebody can get when they come in. Here's our development process. We can put right there on the first page, something about those pre-application meetings.
You need to do, I think you need to look at the web, the website, and make sure the front page is, if you've never developed a project before, if you're not sure what steps you need to take, the DRC is here to help you simplify the process. It's got to be big and bold, so the first time they look at it, they understand there's help to help them.
Any other questions for John?
Thanks, John. You can see why the city council had prioritized this item a few years back, and there's been some really good improvements, and with John in place, we're pretty confident that those improvements will continue. So, thank you again, John. Appreciate you. Okay, moving right along, Tina, I believe these are your- What we want to do next is take a look at, actually, there's three items that are, we definitely want to make sure that you're aware of, that we'd like for you to consider for that strategic consideration, and then we'll explore any other options you would like to take a look at as well. But Tina, go ahead and give us a summary on those three items.
You'll recall that our budget staff sent out a memo in your July 21, Friday packets outlining three key initiatives that staff would recommend you considering at this time as far as new initiatives. One of them was health insurance, and that's really not new. The last few years, we've actually had an increase in our health insurance premiums, and we've had to decide whether the employee or the employer would fund those increases. Another was the six frontline ambulance crew, and the third would be new officers in the police department. And so, I put together some slides, and I'll ask each of those department directors to come up and kind of give you an outline and summarize what their needs are. So, the first one we have here is health insurance, and our HR and risk management director, Lisa Marley, will come up and talk with you about that.
All right, so if you recall, in our health insurance, in this calendar year, the health insurance premiums are done on a calendar year basis. And so, for calendar year 2017, this was the first year that we've raised premiums, or I guess last year was the first year we'd raised premiums in three years. So, we've been really successful in trying to keep those costs down, and I mean that in terms of what the employee pays. The city has contributed more each of those years to offset any kind of increase for the employees. Right now, the city does contribute $5,800 per year for the group health insurance for employees and retirees. Based on our current trend and where our claims is, where they sit right now, keep in mind, we're only three quarters into the year, so we've still got a good full quarter and a couple of months to go. But based on our trend and how the claims are going right now, the, if the employees were to take on the entire cost, it would be a 10.6% increase to their premiums over their existing premium costs right now. Then, if we went with the city paying for the entire increase, that would be a 2.6% increase. And if we split it between employees and the city, we could do a 2.2% increase to the employees and a 2.0% increase to the city. The cost for that, if we were to go with the 2.6% increase to the city, it would be $151.92 per employee per year, or roughly $155,400 for the year. If we went with a 2% increase to the city, that would be 117 and change per employee per year, or $120,182. We have 1,023 people that are covered by that level of the health insurance.
And after that, questions for either of us, we'll be happy to try to answer them.
When will that come to us?
I beg your pardon?
In the budgeting process.
Budgeting process.
I didn't hear the question. Oh, yeah.
Are you looking for any recommendations today from this particular group?
No, sir. I think my intention is to just bring it to your attention so that you'll know.
Yeah, we just want to present some of the priorities that we're taking a look at at this point. So, before we start talking about other strategic considerations you may want to take a look at, we want to make sure that you're well aware of those three items that are important that we do need to address, especially with this next budget cycle as well.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate it.
And next up, we'll discuss the six frontline ambulance, if I can get Chief Dunn to come up and talk with us.
What we have up here is a discussion for putting in a manned six-hour ambulance. Currently, we have five ambulances scattered throughout the city. Last year, we made 12,761 runs. We're on pace this year to do about 13,350 runs. I believe in the orientation you asked me, Mayor, I told you the old metric was about 2,000 runs per ambulance. There is a new metric they use, it's called unit hour utilization. Unfortunately, it even pushes it out worse than if it did using the 2,000 runs per ambulance. The figures that I gave Tina there is a unit hour utilization of .35. With the additional frontline ambulance, that would bring that down to .294. The goal, and this is from the Trade Journal Fire Engineering, is to be between .16 and 24. That seems a little low to me, but the other factor in there, and I got to messing with that this morning, in that .35 variation is only emergency response time and paperwork time. That does not include out-of-service for physical PT, training, or the checking out of the equipment. So, that drives that number even further north. The cost, I've broken this down over a two-year period, the front year cost is what you see there for 425, a little over 425,000. It's additional, I believe, about 212,000 added the second year. My recruits are in school for 16 months, and it's almost 18 months' time we get them fully certified when they get out of school and get to the floor. And the reason for that backend cost is they're being paid at a lower rate till they get fully certified and start receiving all those other pays, and then I have to start certifying, I have to get them all their gear and the other costs that go along with that. So, that's kind of the nutshell of the cost on that. I can tell you that last year, in the fiscal, fiscal calendar year 2016, we killed or- I can tell you that last year in the fiscal, fiscal calendar year 2016, we killed or shut down fire trucks over 200 times to man an ambulance, which means that those districts were without fire suppression for probably an hour to an hour and a half. And the problem with that is, as those ambulances are out of service, and what that also means is all five of those ambulances were out of service making runs at the same time for us to kill a fire truck. The other problem is, when those ambulances start going out and they're out busy like that, when you're bringing an ambulance in from another area, we go from our, about our five-minute average response time to 10, 11, 12, 13-plus minutes. Because if I've got Medic 6 out on North Chaburn that's out, and I have to send the next closest ambulance, which is, would have been out of five or three, that's at least seven to eight minutes just to get to, to where that was. So it's adding that much time to those runs.
Chief, I want to make sure that we have...
We're clear, I don't want to send a message out to the community that, that we have a very unsafe situation, because we have addressed this year as far as the six thou, would you address that as well? Because we are doing something a little bit different, and it's a temporary solution, but at the very least, it is addressing that safety concern.
Because of some of that, those, those runs, our revenue was up a little bit, we took that money. We are hiring a peak ambulance, which we call a peak ambulance, from nine to six, where we have a large influx runs, of course, everybody's out, to help off, offset those runs during those hours, and that has been helpful. And it's not that we're, we're not going to make the run, we will make the run, but when you get to where you're being out all the time, you just, it, it takes longer.
When you say cost for personnel fiscal year 2018 would be 425, 328, is that for total personnel?
That, that's for all of them, and then there's another 212,000 added on, because like I said, they're getting paid at those costs. And then the total going forward would be 637,000 or something like that per year for the, all the personnel.
That's for eight firefighters? Eighters, including benefits?
Yes. That's, well, it's benefits, that's their yearly certifications, everything was included in that.
Chief, you may have said this, Matt.
I may, missed it, but right now, we're at .35 on unit hour utilization today.
That's without PT, physical training, regular CE-type training, and checking out of ambulances. I can tell you, I ran the first two this morning, I have a paper here, if you add in physical training and regular training, it bumps that metric up to .43. And that's without checking out an ambulance, it's probably another 45 minutes a day to check out an ambulance.
Is it, is it fair to take your growth rate in your number of runs, which is the, apparently, the, the older metric that you used? Is it fair to take the same percentage increase of the number of runs year to year and apply that to what we could say, okay, if we did nothing whatsoever, what that .35, .43, however you want to look at it, what that would be this time next year with, if this were not addressed?
I can do that, because I can get what would be an average response time and factor in the number of runs and add that into my spreadsheet, I could do that.
So basically, to just be clear about what we're asking for, we're asking for, for one more ambulance.
One more ambulance that is manned with the personnel.
Yeah.
And that's, and I'm not, I'm not even asking for the ambulance here, we'll work the ambulance purchases into what we do, this is personnel cost.
So, just for clarification standpoint, the training time, you said, was 18 months?
It's 16 months, but we have, once we get through with that, it takes a little bit to get them state-certified, because they're not state-certified getting through. And then we have some other things where we make them actually be the primary medic with oversight before we turn those personnel loose.
But it also takes you a period of time to actually get, if we decided to buy an ambulance, to get it outfitted and, and back here, is that correct?
That is correct, but currently, we have five frontline, we also have seven reserves, so we could take one of those reserves and run it. The biggest problem is the lead time on personnel. And I will, I have a, a group in the pipeline right now, but if I didn't, if you told me go today and I didn't have anything ready, it takes me seven to nine months to process them, and then another 16 months to get them through training. So it's a two-year process if I didn't have anything in the pipeline, but I've, I've got the pipeline nearly...
How many do you have in the pipeline?
Ma'am?
How many do you have in the pipeline?
Uh, there's 20-something applicants, 30 applicants still left, so.
Any other questions?
Chief, thank you, appreciate you.
Okay, and our final initiative is for the police department, they are proposing five additional officers. I know Chief Carter is otherwise engaged, but I believe we, yeah, okay, Chief Ventures coming up. But first, I will let you know, oops, the financial impact of the five additional officers would be $314,000 for the first year. And I also want you to make, make you aware of another need that they will probably have in the coming year, that Chief Howard made me aware of recently, and that is for the lab fees for submitting to the state. The state is no longer letting them do that at no cost, and it will cost them additional, about $50,000 in this coming fiscal year to take care of that.
Also, does this include just officers, or is capital in here also? I was unclear on, from our last discussion, whether capital was on top of this.
It's just officers.
This is just officers?
Correct.
So whatever it takes to equip officers, we would need on top of this, right?
No, this is officers in their uniforms, not, not a car, this is a full officer, uniformed that ready to go.
We need a car?
No.
We don't need cars?
We're fine.
Okay.
Okay, we're requesting...
Let me take this tonight?
We're requesting $314,000 for five additional officers for fiscal year 2018. In 2016, our calls for service were $84,000, and we're projecting $96,000 calls this year. This is a history of our sworn personnel from, back from 1992, we're authorized 154 with a population of 84,000. In 2004, it was increased to 159, with a population of 88,000. In 2010, it was increased to 165 when we took over Lake and Park with a population of 93,000. And then in 2016, we're at 165 with a population estimate of 107,000. And that puts us at 1.64 officers per thousand residents. These are minimum recommendations by the FBI and the IACP of 1.79 officers per thousand, or 1.9 officers per thousand. And I think you said it was up to 2.4?
That's the minimum number recommended by numerous agencies, 1.79 to, to 2.4.
We're at...
We're at 1.64. And these are some of our benchmark cities that we've talked to and shows where they Our, our goal is an additional 20 officers over the next four years, but we're requesting only five for next year and five each additional year then. And then if we get the five next year, that'll put us at 1.69.
That's what we have. This is actually something that, quite frankly, and Chief Carter, when he first came in, Mike talked about this a little while ago, he talked about the priorities that he had was to get properly staffed and proper pay, and then number three, of course, was the police station, but at this point, this is definitely something that, that does need to be addressed, and make sure that we have the, the proper staffing. You have up there public safety as our number one priority, and it really is for our community. So, again, thank you for your presentation, and this is definitely a, a strategic consideration that we need to take very seriously, so, thank you, gentlemen.
Do we need a break?
We do.
I think we need a break. Take a break. Back to order, or something like that.
As far as the new strategic considerations, Councilman Harry Thomas actually submitted a list of, of areas of, that probably, that definitely do need to be addressed, a lot of those are very big-ticket items. I am going to tell you just to review those, I'd like to meet with you individually, like I've been doing anyway, and kind of highlight some of those areas that you feel should also be a consideration. But really, for the, for the sake of time, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item, which is on the agenda, which is the downtown master development plan and assets. But I do want to thank Councilman Thomas for submitting that list, and as I mentioned, I'll go over those with you individually. So it's downtown master development plan and assets, I do want to ask John James to return to the front and go ahead and get a start on this one.
Just wanted to kind of first give a brief overview of the, our downtown master development strategy, which is a document, actually, a couple of documents that have been prepared over the last eight or 10 years, basically developing a vision and next steps, basically, for growth and development of downtown. The plan identified three basic strategies, although there's, there's quite a bit more than this, these were the three primary strategies they identified. One is workplace infill development, basically meaning jobs and employment downtown. The second was restaurants, focusing on Chadburn in particular, but also throughout downtown. And they identified over the next 10 years, at least market capacity for at least six new restaurants downtown. We've already, since this study was done, we've already seen at least two or three. And let me back up on the workplace, they, they estimated, based on the market study that was done, about 200,000 square feet of office and other employment space could be incorporated into downtown, just based on the general growth characteristics of the community. And then finally, housing, one of the most important things you can do to make a downtown viable is bring people there, not just to work, but also to live, making it a 24-hour destination. And they estimated a 10-year housing demand of a little over 600 units in the downtown. The focus of the plan is both on redevelopment of existing buildings, so taking existing underutilized buildings and remodeling and reusing them, but then also new development on vacant properties. When they talked about the development on vacant properties, they specifically talked about taking advantage of the city-owned properties along the riverfront, something that we've been talking more and more about recently. One of the primary focuses of the plan is to identify ways to help encourage and incentivize development. One of the things they recognize is that downtown development can be a little more costly and take a little longer than greenfield development, where you're taking a vacant site and putting all the infrastructure in. Downtowns have unique issues and problems, especially with older buildings and having to deal with those kinds of things. And so helping to finance that gap, basically the difference in cost of developing downtown versus out at the edge of town, and identifying ways that that can happen. And then another recommendation they made was developing some form-based design standards to ensure that development in the downtown is really downtown-style development. You know, I just read an article today about how one of the worst things you can do in a downtown is put something like a, a traditional gas station. You know, that, that...
Or a car.
Yeah, I mean, that breaks up, you know, the pedestrian environment is such a critical aspect of downtown development, putting something that's purely car-oriented like a gas station, while it can be done effectively and appropriately, you can't just plop down the same style of, of building that you would put out on the highway. So having some design standards for how that can happen.
John?
Yeah?
Do we have very many city-owned riverfront properties?
Uh, we don't, we do have a couple of prime pieces of land, though, that, that the city owns, that we are actively looking at how we can market those, and one of the, again, and I think I may have a slide, well, I'll get to it in a second, but, yeah, there's a...
To piggyback on that question, is that we do the Edgewater, you know, those properties that we purchased, but additionally, back then, when we were having those discussions, the Health Foundation was interested in sort of partnering alongside the city, so there are other properties that, while they're not owned by the city, they are owned by the Health Foundation.
And one of the ideas there with those riverfront properties is that those are vacant properties that could perhaps be a catalyst-type development to help spur additional development. Because of the city's ownership of some of those and involvement, we might be able to help push something forward.
And, and we do own, just so you'll know, pretty much all, a lot of the property along the river is owned by the city, but a lot of it is designated as parkland, so there are some that aren't designated.
The plan talks quite a bit, as I mentioned, about incentives. I just mentioned a few here, but one is obviously the tax increment reinvestment zone or tiers. We already have incentive grants in place for development in the downtown. The tiers also incorporate the, the north side as well, but for this purpose, we're just talking about the downtown side. But there's also an element of tiers that we have not used here, but other cities have found successful, is larger grants through development agreements, basically for, for very large-scale projects. It provides an opportunity to, the way it often works is the developer fronts the costs, and they get paid back a portion of those costs over time out of the taxes that they increase within the area. But that can be done, it, it can include grants of quite a bit more than our limit with tiers, which right now is $75,000. You can work some different types of agreements. 380 development agreements are similar, 380 is just a section of the state code that allows for these types of agreements, but it allows quite a bit of flexibility on everything from sales tax incentives, property tax rebates, and a variety of things like that, that can also be used to help incentivize development. And then on, particularly on the city-owned properties, a land subsidy is one thing they specifically mentioned as a way to help fund that gap with the development. If we own the property, we can sell it for less than the market value, and that difference between the market value and what we sell it for is, or can be, an incentive grant if it's done through one of these types of agreements. And again, the plan lists a number of other different types of incentive programs, the idea here is just to find ways to help assist development in the downtown. And specifically talking about the Concho Riverfront, again, it's intended to be a potential catalytic investment, and it's, the plan found that it was ideal for medium-density residential. I'll show a graphic of that in just a second, but it supports the goal of more housing and also leverages the investments the city has made in the riverfront. We've, we've created, through our investment in the river, a, a prime destination for parks and trails and all the things that have been done down there, utilizing those properties for new development helps make them more valuable because of the investment we've already made. At the same time, new development down by the river helps make those parks and trails and all of the amenities we have more usable to more people. And as, as Rick mentioned, it includes not only city-owned properties, but there are other underdeveloped properties along the river as well. This is just a graphic that, that they created as possible developments, and you can see all the way up and down the river, opportunities and potential for new development along the riverfront. Again, one thing that, that we emphasize, and I think the plan emphasizes as well, is making sure that we keep the riverfront as trails and park. We, I don't think anyone wants to see private development take up the land all the way to the river, we want to keep that riverfront for public use, but then allowing development to happen behind that strip of public land, again, to create additional amenities and, and meet some of the other goals of the plan. That is, oh, I'm sorry, the, the last piece here is the strategies for some of those city-owned properties. We want to look at seeking proposals for development projects and on those city-owned Mixed-use development would be ideal, where you not only have housing, but maybe also employment or retail-type development. We want to work towards establishing a stakeholder process where we involve downtown interests and basically anybody who has an interest in downtown, in helping to identify what, what should the vision be for that land along the riverfront before we take the next step of either seeking proposals or other... of either seeking proposals or other development types of activity from the private sector. The, I think that's, yeah, the last piece I want to talk about is, is how we oversee development in the downtown. It used to be done through the downtown development commission, which was basically merged with the tiers board. So now, the tiers board has the combined functions of what used to be tiers, but also overseeing downtown development. They haven't done much of that, because there's really been nothing for them to review, but right now, the way the city's ordinances are established, the tiers board is the board that would oversee that. But we wanted to raise that question, is that the appropriate venue? So in the future, should it be tiers? Should we recreate the downtown development commission? Another option is direct oversight by council, you all taking the, taking the reins and, and guiding it yourselves, or simply an ad hoc committee, not a full-blown committee that's permanent, like the DDC was, but a committee that's established by the council to meet as needed, but not necessarily every month for an indefinite period of time. So that's one thing, if, either today or in the future, we'd like to get some input from you all on who should be providing that direct oversight to this downtown development and, and the projects involved. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Having worked on 20 years on downtown redevelopment, I will say that the most, for me, the only option is the ad hoc committee established by council to meet as needed, but not a permanent board. The, I do not believe the existing tiers board is an appropriate board to do that. I know what the negatives were with the downtown development commission. I know that his, downtown San Angel, Inc., was responsible as a board for downtown redevelopment. That's the whole purpose behind downtown San Angel, Inc. So when you start looking at it, what we created was a mess, because we had people who did not live with downtown development day in and day out as a separate board, starting to talk about downtown development, but hadn't and didn't and doesn't do day-to-day, block-by-block, conversation-by-conversation. So you had people disconnected with the daily business of redevelopment, making decisions, which did not work. You today have a huge opportunity and growth opportunity by developing the river, but if you don't do it in combination with the people who are working on it daily and meeting with developers and builders and contractors and people on a daily basis, if they're not involved in it, you got a problem. And we've had a problem, because we have too many different entities and groups trying to make decisions, and it doesn't work.
We did all that, basically, in my district, and I happen to agree with you. It certainly does not belong under the tiers, and I know that there were some issues with, with the old downtown development corporation, so an ad hoc committee to me, the appropriate people on that committee makes sense to me with, with some very good oversight from the council. So I, I, I think I, I can support that wholeheartedly.
Thank you.
We also talked about the assets, and we look at development and proper development, and that is going to take stakeholders, and maybe it's that ad hoc committee also to determine how that property, the property will be reviewed and possibly used in the future as well. We do have recommendations from the downtown master development plan, but we're presenting this information to you, because this is what we had initially, and just to kind of get a direction from you to give us a, kind of an indication of where you would like for us to move forward with this. Again, it doesn't have to be decided today, but we did want to introduce this, because this is such a huge asset for us at downtown, and we just want to make sure we do it right. So that's why we're presenting it today.
I'm ready.
I'm ready.
Any other discussion on this? No? John, thank you, sir. You're off the hook. Appreciate you. Mayor, this is what we do have, all the items have been presented at this point. We do want to thank all of you for actually meeting with us and giving us your thoughts and input. We had some really good input, especially on those five key messages. I do want to meet with council members specifically, as I mentioned a while ago, and kind of go over some of those other initiatives that perhaps we need to be taking a closer look at. Of course, all those are kind of constrained by, by our budgetary limitations, but again, I definitely do want to meet with all of you individually on that. Again, we do want to thank you all for, for taking time away from your busy schedules to meet with us on this one, and with that, you have a wonderful afternoon, and God bless.
Thank you, Danny.
Thank you.